David, how are you doing?
I'm doing good.
Thank you. You were. Go let her rip.
Okay, calling to order, the Parowan City Council meeting for August twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. It is six o'clock P. M. Thank you so much for being here tonight. It's always nice to walk into a room full of interested people in our community. Um, we'll start tonight with an opening prayer and being led in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Heavenly Father, we are so grateful that we can be together to meet, um, as a city council and a town to discuss what our needs and our desires are for our community and to work together to come to common grounds and common goals. We are so thankful for all the moisture that we have received. Please bless that we may continue to receive said moisture as necessary in a timely manner. Again, thank you for all of thy many blessings, and I say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Can you please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Rochelle.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to start with, um, any declarations of conflicts or personal interest in any agenda items by the city council members?
No, Mayor.
No, Mayor.
I have one, Mayor. I've got a check in there for me, a reimbursement check for the U. A. M.'s, uh, for their, um, we couldn't use one of the city cards because they were filled up with the pool stuff on it, so I had to, so I'll vote on everything except for that one and abstain on that one.
Okay, thank you. All right, and now on to item number four, the approval of the meeting's agenda by council vote.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting's agenda as outlined.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Now moving on to item number five, this is the public comment period. It's an opportunity for you to come and to speak to the council. Each one of you has a two-minute time limit. You can state your name, um, you don't need to state your address, and the time is now yours.
Good evening. Thanks for letting us have our time to give our opinions. I've heard a lot in the last couple of weeks at different meetings about, we need to hear from the community, we need to hear from the citizens. Anyway, first of all, I'd like to thank the Chamber of Commerce for the Meet the Candidates Forum that they put on Tuesday evening. They represented it, our community with pride and professionalism, in my opinion, that's my opinion. Um, now I would like to address the last city council with discussion of where to place pickleball courts. It was stated to talk to residents and see if someone has a nicer piece of property they might want to donate or maybe a piece we could purchase. The word "purchase" got me. My confusion is we own the property at the Valentine Peak Sports Complex, so shouldn't that be where any future sports projects are built? I mean, if that's what it's for. Um, and this way we would be financially responsible as well. And with the economy like it is, I feel like we need to slow down. It's my opinion to repair our infrastructures that are in desperate need, like our roads, our sewer, our water, weed control, cemetery, Meeks Pond, and the list goes on. The pool isn't even finished yet, we don't even have a final budget on it, and now we're talking about building pickleball courts. I think we should focus, this is my personal opinion, guys, I think we should focus on things in our community that need to be fixed and repaired and complete them before taking on any more debt. I attended meetings in Cedar City, and the county is going to raise the general fund one hundred percent. They actually say it's going to be more than that, but I won't go into it, on our property taxes to build a new jail. Many people may lose their homes over this increase. Our city's talking about a RAP tax. Then there's a rumor that the Iron County School is putting another bond on the ballot in twenty-four in November, which will cost the taxpayers money, more money. And I don't know about all of you, but I've squeezed every drop I can out of my budget just to exist, cutting corners on food, on fuel, on utilities. But how do you cut corners on your home when they're going to raise that tax? Anyway, finally, it is not appropriate for a candidate or a council member to disparage any city employee. It is unacceptable and needs to be addressed with accountability, taken for what was said Tuesday evening from the stage podium. Thank you very much, I appreciate you all, Mr. Shertliff. Thank you for wanting to stand by and hold on to the fact that we need to spend what we can and not overspend what we don't have. Thank you.
All right, you all know I read the room, if I don't see anyone wiggling, we move on. All right, we'll move, yes, sir.
May I make a public announcement? Uh, since the, uh, scouts have no longer been around to retire flags, uh, Jerry Vesely came to me and, uh, with some, some flags from the service club, Salt Lake Service Club that needed to be retired, and Jed Townsend from the school brought me a bag. And then in talking to the Veterans, uh, Commander, we've decided that the Parowan Veterans will have a flag retirement ceremony in, uh, in the fall. We're looking at end of October, maybe the first part of November. Uh, I've talked to Dan and the ladies in the, uh, front office. They've allowed us to have flags dropped off at the city office or to me or to Cleve Matheson. If you have flags that need to be retired, we'll gather up the flags from the community and, and do a retirement service up at the monument in, in the fall. So, me, the city, or Cleve will accept any flags that need to be retired. Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, thanks for the information.
What, within what timeframe should they do it?
Between, well, the city office, you can drop it off at my house anytime. My office hours are at Maverick at five o'clock in the morning, getting a cup of coffee so he can stop me there. I'm at the monument at seven, you can drop it there, you can-
Do they got two weeks until you do it or three?
No, it's, no, it's not gonna, it's, you can drop them off anytime, it won't, we won't do it until the fall, probably late October, first of November. So, we've got some time to-
You can come to the microphone, kind of extending public comment for a minute.
Yeah, we'd love to be a part of that, and we'd love to do it in conjunction with our veterans.
Veterans, I was thinking about doing it Saturday or even, um, great minds think alike.
Right, I think that would enhance, you know, what we're trying to do, so that's what we're all about.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving now into our consent meeting. Um, item number six is approval of the city council meeting minutes for August tenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent meeting, items six and seven.
Mayor, I have a question on the minutes. Uh, in the minutes, we discussed the location of the pickleball courts, and I think it's important that, in that discussion, we discussed the importance of contacting the residents that would be affected in that area as well as we did with the Lions Park. And I did not see any mention in those minutes about making that contact, and I think that's important, that that's noted.
Okay, so, we have a motion on the table with, uh, an addition.
I'll make that same motion with the approved, with the changes, as noted.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now moving into the approval of the warrant register, other than the conflict mentioned by council member Gail, I need motion.
Six and seven, I said.
Oh, okay, thank you. We're good to go then. So we'll move out of the consent moving into the action meeting. Item number eight, annual reinstatement of the RAM resolution, resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash zero eight dash zero two. We have Principal Kim Bailey, as well as the student government here tonight, to address us with this agenda item.
Good evening, I'm Madely Sudwix, and I'm the student body president of PHS this year, um, and these are some of our members of our student government. The high school is looking forward to this present school year, as well as working more with the city and the community. We really appreciate the time and effort that the community and city council put into supporting us last year, and we hope that this year we continue to be true RAMs in our high school, as well as our community, by helping each other. We love the collaboration we had with the Veterans Day Assembly last year to honor our beloved veterans, and we loved seeing a lot of you at our Thanksgiving celebration as well. We want to continue to make our community feel a part of our future plans and activities, and that's why we want to show our commitment to our Parowan Strong Resolution. Our community is very unique in the sense that all of us are very connected. We really are true RAMs by respecting each other, being accountable for our actions, making a difference in others' lives, and by serving each and every one of our community members in need. We cannot name another community that shows the generosity and kindness that ours has. We show our support for families going through trials, we raise awareness for medical conditions, and we are there through thick and thin of the most serious of situations. We must continue the support throughout our schools and community by keeping our traditions and involvement strong. We look forward to Parowan's birthday, where we get to represent our ancestors, as well as our various service projects that we've had the opportunity to help with. Um, even more recently, we know that several groups of high schoolers donated their time in restoring our historic pool, as well as the devoted members of our very own city council and community members. The collaboration on that project alone, with everyone coming together, was so inspiring to witness and help with. It's things like that that make Parowan such a special place, and we are so grateful for the partnership that we have been able to build with you all, as well as what we hope to continue expanding on.
Hi, council, my name is Daniel Bernhardy, I am the student body vice president for Parowan High School. I will be going over some of the points on our Parowan Strong Resolution. At the start, we have, as a community, we resolve to be true RAMs. Uh, the second point, as a community, we will find ways to work together and support each other. Third, as a commu- community, we will help educate and inform the public of our roles and responsibilities. Our last point, as a community, we will look for ways to build community spirit, support our community servants, and make Parowan strong.
I'd like to thank you for your support in this resolution, um, and ask if you have any more advice, um, on how we can continue to make Parowan stronger.
I guess that's the silence that we want, right?
No, I think they're doing a great job, that's the thing. I don't think we can improve upon what they're doing.
I agree, I was just gonna say that, you know, we have great students in our school. They're the highlight of the community, in my opinion, no offense to any of you. But they're the future, and they do such an amazing job. And last year, when I had this idea, you guys had a profound impact on them. And so I brought this back up to him, I said, hey, do we want to continue this? I think it's an amazing experience, it's something that we need to do to give back and invest. And personally, I think there are two things that will help in, in happiness, you know, during a lifetime. Number, number one is just be thankful for what we have, for the land that we love and the people around us. The second one is find ways to serve, share our love, our love of community, the spirit that we have. And these kids have that. And by working together, we can accomplish so many things, and it was highlighted last year in a, a number of the activities that we've done. So first off, we just want to say thank you. Thank you for being a part of what we do and making a difference. And thank you for, you know, the opportunities that we have to serve. And we want to continue that tradition and work with you. So, with that, if you guys are good with this, we'd like to have this resolution passed, and we'd love to sign, uh, together, as we've done in the past, and take a few pictures.
I'll make a motion to reinstate the RAM rev- resolution, two thousand and twenty-three dash zero eight dash zero two.
I'll second that. Okay, all those in favor, by roll call vote.
Jim Shertliff, a resounding aye.
Matt Gail, aye.
Sharon Downey, aye.
Rochelle Topham, aye.
David Burton, aye.
Thank you.
All right, motion carries.
[inaudible]
Appreciate all you do. What?
We gotta stay with that whole bench.
No. Change please.
Where'd you go? No, you're on the right track, you're on the right track.
Well, I think if I put the chair right here, it blocks me.
Do you want to be in the back though?
I think they're gonna, I think they're gonna- Well, maybe they can line up like right here in the front. Maybe you guys line up right here in the front, maybe, I don't know. Tony, see what's better.
Rochelle is certified teacher now, so we need to let-
This is a big deal.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gil is named for this thing, I thought this was like official documents.
All right, thank you, that was wonderful.
They're sounding good now.
Okay.
It's good now. Unless they just like to me it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, good night.
All right, moving now to action meeting, item number nine, this is the RAP tax resolution, two thousand and twenty-three dash zero eight dash zero three. Rochelle Topham.
All right, so, um, with state law, we have to pass a resolution that we're going to put the RAP tax on the ballot. So we've already gone to the county, they're not going to impose a RAP tax, and so it allows us to do so. Um, so this resolution just allows us to put it on the ballot. It's just a formality.
Do you want to give an overview of what the RAP tax is?
Rochelle, maybe you can tell them how many communities have the RAP tax.
Let me open up my computer.
We're about the only ones that don't.
You're right, we are. And if you guys know anything about the RAP tax, is basically every surrounding community, from south to north, has a RAP tax, and so when you go shop there, you pay it. It's zero point one percent, so it's one penny for every ten dollars. I think it's-
Is it one penny?
One penny.
Okay. Cause I had that question asked, and I wasn't exactly sure.
Let me unzoom my computer, cause it's decided to-
One penny for every ten dollars.
One penny for every ten dollars, yeah. And it's not just the Parowan residents that pay it. I mean, it's on all qualifying, um, merchandise that you purchase, but it's like anybody that travels into the T. A. M. buys snacks or drinks. It's anybody that comes to, um, like the Chevron, which is, I know a lot of us, but people coming in and out of K. B., like, stuff like that, it's not just, the Parowan residents are not burdening the entire thing. So that's why I hate when it says, "RAP tax," so it's Recreation Arts and Parks. So this money is set aside into, um, a separate entity, like, it's like a lined item, and it can only go to anything that has to do with recreation, anything that has to do with arts, and anything that has to do with the parks. Um, my computer has made this really, really small.
And Rochelle, it, it does not include food, though, the grocery stores, right?
No, no, it does not, not on your groceries. Oh, my word. Well, look what it did to me. Hold on. I had this all prepared, but my computer is just, has a mind of its own. Anyway, so, I'll have to just wing it. So it'll go to help maintain the swimming pool, it'll help maintain like the heritage park, um, the Old Rock Church, it can, money can go towards that. Um, it can go towards concerts in the park, the Latin Theater, um, oh, the arts program that just started up here. So, everything that basically everyone loves in our community, this goes towards that. So if you don't like to walk on our trails, if you don't like to play at our parks, if you don't like to go to the swimming pool, then don't vote for it. Basically, like, all of that stuff just goes towards all of that. Um, there will be, also, you can send in arguments for or against the RAP tax, and Kelly, will those be published somewhere? Okay, all right, so we will create a voter information pamphlet, and anybody who submits an argument for or against it will go in that pamphlet, so you'll be able to read, um, other people's opinions too, not just the people putting out the pamphlet. Um, it's just, any eligible voter may prepare a written argument for or against this ballot proposition by filing a request with the Parowan City Recorder, which would be Kelly Bassett, um, before five P. M., no later than September eighteenth of this year. And that will be, um, on our website, and then are we putting it in the newspaper or? In, and, oh, in the newsletter, so it'll be public for you guys to find that information to-
It's not in the paper. It doesn't have to be published.
No, it just has to be published in one spot, but we're gonna do it in the newsletter and on our website. Does anybody have any questions? Or concerns? Cause if you don't tell me, I can't answer them. Okay, forever hold your peace.
All right, with that information, um, I would entertain a motion to approve the RAP tax resolution, two thousand and twenty-three dash zero eight dash zero three.
I will make a motion to approve the RAP tax resolution, two thousand and twenty-three dash zero eight dash zero three.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
By roll call.
We need-
Oh, by roll call.
Jim Shertliff, aye.
Matt Gail, aye.
Sharon Downey, aye.
Rochelle Topham, aye.
David Burton, aye. And I'm gonna qualify this, I heard somebody say that I'd never vote for it because I don't support tax increases, and I don't. But, this is not, it's not saddling the individuals and the individual community members, and it helps with our tourism, and it is a tax that is needed. It is, it's not across-the-board exactly a type of a normal tax that you're talking about.
All right.
Well, that's why it, it is- Point of order. We need to-
Uh, thank you, okay, motion carries, thank you. Okay, now moving to item number ten, this is the Mortenson Property Donation at Lions Park. And it's resolution, two thousand and twenty-three dash zero eight dash zero four, presented by Dan Jesson.
Okay, so, um, I want to update everybody about, and I can't remember if we talked about this in the last city council meeting or not, but, um, we had, it was on the agenda, we talked about, um, we had Ms. Mortenson on the phone, and it was, she was having a hard time understanding, um, uh, Councilman Shertliff, Councilman Burton, um, had a, a pretty robust discussion, but she couldn't quite hear all of it. At, at the end, um, Councilman, um, Shertliff invited her to come and, and have a conversation in person. So, we did that, uh, it was, it was both those councilmen, and we had Liz Zaleski from Historical Preservation and myself, was there anybody else there, Jim?
Uh, no.
No.
No, that's it. And, um, we, we had a discussion about what this area being in, historical preservation, would mean for any future development, how Historical Preservation Committee would have to review any major modifications to that. And, um, but then, as we, as the conversation proceeded, um, I, I think we hit paydirt. This is something that's been kicked around for, um, it's been on the agenda three times this year, four times this year.
A lot.
Um, there's been some hesitancy by the city council, um, good advice from our attorney, um, I weighed in on it as well, and we were, we've kind of been at this uncomfortable- I weighed in on it as well, and we've kind of been at this uncomfortable stalemate, not really sure how to proceed. In this meeting with Mrs. Mortenson, we, we kind of had an aha moment. Just to remind everybody, land was donated where the pool now sits, and the family maintains that there was a, basically a handshake agreement that, as to the use of the rest of the park. And the Mortensons have been asking for the city to put something in ink, specifically a deed restriction on the property, and that's kind of where we've been dancing around. In that conversation, the aha moment was when we, we have been exploring the idea of potentially working with, not potentially, we've even started to talk with, with the school district. We haven't yet had a conversation with S U U about potentially moving the Head Start building, and that certainly has been a sliver, the metaphor is apt, a sliver that has festered ever since the nineties when that was put in. And we had been talking about that as possibly being a, something that could, that we could commit to doing or trying to do. It's going to involve multiple entities, so it's complex. It's not like we just go pick that thing up and move it. But would that, would that satisfy the concern? And of course, that's been definitely something that they would like to see happen, but still wanted this restriction. Of course, the challenge with the restriction is, we can't bind a future council. Even if we were able to put a deed restriction on ourselves, we could ourselves later take that same deed restriction off. It doesn't really accomplish anything. And basically, the aha moment was if we actually just make that part of the park usable and functional and in use, in other words, if it's just raw grass and it's this weird triangle shape, nobody's ever going to use it. It's always going to be a blank slate that future councils are going to consider maybe doing something with. So the suggestion was made, what if we actually make some improvements to it? We, we plant some trees, we put in some tables, we make it functional. We've talked about putting a walking track all the way around the park. And the idea is that if we actually do something that it is, makes it so that people are going to use it. They're going to, they're going to stop, and they're going to walk their dogs, they're going to, they're going to go sit in the shade and eat lunch. They're going to do some of these things that if it is in use, that's actually the best thing that would maybe not make it tempting for a future council to want to put anything there, because it's going to be in use. And that's going to be the best, you know, the best thing all around, because we want something good for our citizens, and the Mortensons want it to be a beautiful park and that we were not actually doing something. Mrs. Mortenson was really extremely excited about that idea, and it felt like everybody in the room was like, wow, this feels like, this feels really good. This feels like it could be a good thing. So what we talked about was actually doing a resolution that would, and, oh, before we go to the resolution, as we have been digging into this area, we actually, Kelly, I don't know who did all the research. I know the Mortensons were in, doing some research. I know Kelly found information. We found the original warranty deed back, it started in sixty, and it was signed in sixty-one, that it was deeded to the Mortensons. Absolutely nothing in there about any agreement. However, there was something very interesting. The number of acres that was deeded was point six, six, six. I'm not saying anything. Don't draw any conclusions. Two-thirds of an acre mathematically was donated to the city. Well, the park is much more than two-thirds of an acre. The park is quite a bit more than two-thirds of an acre. So I went up, I spent some time at the county recorder's office. Anything past like eighty-three, the records are not online. They have to dig back in the old books. County recorder's office dug back, and they looked through everything. Come to find out, what was donated by the Mortensons was the piece that you see that the pool is sitting on, north, to the north tip of the park. The other property was obtained from other sources. Two other sources specifically. There's a piece that is one point nine eight acres, which is basically the larger triangle that's on the right. Then there is a piece that is on the left, lower left-hand side, which is point six, seven acres. That was neither of these, and then there's this other little square, which I think is probably like an extension of the road. I mean, you know how it is sometimes with parcels, it gets kind of weird. Regardless, any resolution or anything that we want to do or agree to or figure out a solution to put this thing to bed would only apply to that north, two-thirds of an acre area, where the actual pool building sits, the actual pool itself, and where that, you can see on the red roof is where the Head Start building is and so forth. So Kelly, can you click on the resolution? I actually want to read some of the language in there. Wrong one.
Actually, Dan, that entire pool does not sit on...
The new, reimagined, expanded pool now sits on two different parcels, which are both owned by the city. And yeah, anyway, so, kind of interesting. So I just want to read the whereas's. Whereas in the early nineteen-sixties, Bart Ver Mortensen donated point six, six, six acres to Parowan City. The property donated is currently defined as parcel number that. The Mortenson family has maintained that there was a handshake agreement with Parowan City that a parcel should be used for the construction of a city pool, and the rest of the property should be used as a park. By the way, as we went back through and we read, in the seventies, Bert isn't here to speak for himself, but it was interesting to see echoes throughout the years where he came in and basically, when the pool was built, the property, I think, was left in a natural state. It was not improved. And he came in many times and basically said, you guys never planted grass. I want you to plant grass. And they says, okay, we'll look at it. And at one point, he came in and demanded the property back and said, you either plant grass or give me the property back. They said, we're not going to give you the property back, but we'll plant grass. And what I can tell is it looked like they planted grass in the seventies, like nineteen seventy was the last, the last minute. And then in the nineties, there, it was brought to the city to consider doing an S U U Head Start. Everybody thought that was a fantastic idea, and that was voted in a city council meeting, and a Head Start was put in. And I think that was ninety-seven. And then, of course, fast forward to a pickleball discussion, by the way, in the other part of the park led to this. That wasn't what the park was donated for, and so on and so forth. And, and by the way, Mrs. Mortenson has, has been very clear recently that the main concern is on the north part of the park. And certainly from the city's perspective, if we were going to do anything, you know, to put this thing to bed, it would be based on the north part of the pool.
Well, Dan, that, in those minutes, Bart Mortensen addressed all the time, all those different instances, was addressing that north side.
He did.
He was never addressing, he knew. He knew.
Well, he knew because he's the one that donated it, yeah.
Yeah.
That's right. So the city did eventually satisfy him by putting the grass in, and then, of course, then the Head Start building. So whereas nineteen ninety-seven, the city council voted to allow construction of an S U U Head Start building on the parcel in question, the city obtained, obtained the legal opinion that this was legal to do so, and it is still the opinion of the city that the city has no legal constraints on the use of the property resulting from the donation. Whereas the Mortenson family maintains that the construction of an S U U Head Start violated the handshake agreement from the sixties and that the city shouldn't have allowed the building of the facility. Whereas, it is the desire of the city to consider the Mortenson family's request by working with S U U Head Start to relocate the S U U Head Start building to a different location and restore the property to a park as determined advisable by Parowan City. Basically, this just says that we're, that it's, that's our desire, right? It's also our desire in the next whereas, of Parowan City, to beautify the area, to complement the recently renovated pool, and add improvements that would encourage the public to use the property as a park. It is believed that if the property is improved such that it results in the constant use and enjoyment by the public, it will therefore not be considered by a future city council for any other use. So it's just the idea that if we put this into use, doesn't mean we couldn't do anything legally, but it's going to be probably not really ever considered. Because people would say, what are you doing tearing up our park, right? That's the concept. Now, now therefore let it be resolved by this resolution. Next paragraph, does hereby agree to encourage Southern Utah University and Iron County School District to find a suitable location for relocation of the facility. It is understood that this process will take time, effort, and expense on behalf of the aforementioned entities. You'll notice the entities there are Southern Utah University and the school district. The S U U Head Start is their responsibility. All that's, I'm just posing, the city has a lease, where we, we've granted a lease for them to have their building there. We still own the property. At any given time, we could actually discontinue that lease. It is their operation. We're basically letting them operate there. So moving it would, would need to be a part of the school district and S U U to figure that out from a budgetary aspect.
Well, and the lease is technically expired.
Yeah, and we would need to look at the lease to see, you know, as far as renewal or basically demand a new one, or say, we need you to move it because we really don't want to renew it. But one of the purposes of this resolution is not only to kind of clarify, but to make a statement of that, that what we desire to do, so the Mortensons know that we're, we want to get this resolved, but also gives us something that we can take to S U U and say, this isn't just a pet project from one or two people involved in administration. The council wants to move it, and this is the resolution that says that we, that's our determination, right? That gives us a little bit of standing ground with S U U and the school district to say, let's do this. Let's get it moved. We want to move it, right? That's kind of the point here. But we understand that it, that there are going to be budgetary constraints that they have to deal with, so, sorry, sorry. Back to this. Parowan City does not guarantee that the building will be relocated, only that Parowan City will work in earnest to encourage such relocation without committing any future financial resources to facilitate the same. The city reserves the option to choose the method, time limit, and terms of negotiation process. Parowan City Council by this resolution does hereby agree upon successful relocation of the S U U Head Start building to explore at its discretion, design options to make the newly vacated ground beautiful and more fully usable by the public as a park. Examples of designs that will be explored include, include but are not limited to the following. The installation of shade trees, picnic tables, walking jogging paths, fountains, barbecues, playground equipment, or any other similar improvements which purposes to enhance, beautify, and make the property more used by the public. All improvements will be done as funding is made available, whether by budget appropriations or as grants can be obtained by the city. Until such time as funding can be found for improvements, the property will be maintained in a default state of sod-covered soil. So basically, we're going to do something. We're going to explore some options. I think that this is the fun, exciting things. These were some of the things that we kind of talked with, with Ms. Mortenson about, and she was like, if I can characterize her, she was really excited about it, right, Jim and Dave? She was like, this feels awesome. This feels great. I told her playground equipment is really expensive. Don't count on anything like that, maybe, but we can plant some trees in the meantime, and, sorry, Jim?
No, no, you're fine. I'm just leaning up so I can hear you better.
So that's basically where we came to, and the point of the resolution is, is just to say that, you know, this is what we're intending to, to start working on, and that's kind of where we're at.
She expressed that this is what she had desired, and that she was agreeable.
This doesn't put us in a uncomfortable position of signing a contract, going back in time and doing, putting strings on ourselves, or binding a future council. It doesn't do any of that, but it sets our intention, which I think we've all been pretty much wanting to resolve it, right?
So if there aren't any other questions or discussion from the council, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to say something really quick, that I've been thinking about reading this. I think I am going to abstain from voting, because I do, I want them to know that I do work for the Iron County School District, and so I feel like there's kind of a conflict there, even though I don't feel like my vote tonight would jeopardize any of that, but I am going to abstain from voting.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
I'll make a motion then to approve the Mortenson property donation at Lyons Park, resolution 2023-08-04.
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call vote.
Jim Sherliffe, aye.
Matt Gale, aye.
Sharon Downey, aye.
Rochelle Topham abstain.
David Burton, aye.
Alright, thank you. The motion carries. Okay, now we're moving to action meeting item number eleven. Accept/deny petition for annexation. Haslam Anderson annexation. And we have Rich Pigott here to inform us about this item on the agenda.
Maybe as Rich is, is coming up, I can just describe real quick where we are at in this process, because it is quite a process per Utah code nowadays. The first step in the process, if somebody wants to annex, is they approach the city and county planners, city engineer and county engineer, and just basically pitch the idea, because it involves these entities. We had a meeting, we did it on, on video quite some time ago. Then the question is, is it within the city's declaration area of annexation, and it is, because you can't consider anything that isn't in that map. The county then has to weigh in as to whether the proposal creates an island or a peninsula, and the county has quite a process that they go through with their planning, zoning, and, and the sponsor or applicant has gone through that, worked with the county. They've explored that. The county actually had some recommendations. Originally, it was one parcel that we were looking at. The county said, we're not comfortable with this unless you include another parcel, which is a different owner, because otherwise it would create a peninsula that the county wasn't comfortable with. So then that owner had to be looped into this whole conversation, and that owner was amenable to it, and the county went through and basically came to the conclusion that they were comfortable with proceeding. And so then the next thing is the petition, petitioner sends a notice of intent to affected entities. Those are not property owners. Those are governmental entities. Government, I mean, the petitioner did that. And then, once that's done, the county has to send a notice within three hundred feet of annexation. The county clerk did that and certified that that had been done to us, triggering the next step for the petitioner to file a notice of petition with the city, at which point the city council, which is what we're doing tonight, votes to accept or deny the petition. This is not voting to allow annexation. This is voting to accept or deny the petition to annex. I'm sorry. I'm not going to apologize for the process. I'm sorry for how painful it is to try and figure it out. There's literally a flow chart. So tonight, we're going to consider that petition. If it's denied, the process stops. There could be another petition later. If we choose to accept the petition, we then continue with the process, which will involve our attorney, looking to see that the petition meets the requirements. And then we do some noticing that happens to different property owners. Then we go through a series of public hearings. First, we go through Planning Commission, and there's public hearings and discussion by Planning Commission of how it could affect things. There's recommendation, then it comes to city council with a public hearing, and then at that point, the council decides to accept or deny the actual annexation. So where we're at in that process, I just described, and we have Rich here, and I'm glad he's here touting exactly what this is, because I've been excited about the project, but haven't really been able to speak to it because it wasn't my place. It wasn't a public thing. It was just a petition, so. Rich, take it away.
Alright, thank you, Dan. It's always great working with you and Mayor Altman and council members, glad to be able to present this property to you. I'm speaking on behalf of the Haslam, ah, stuttered a little bit, Haslam Family Trust, and also Rick Anderson. As this petition is going through the city of Parowan, Maverick is not a party to it. They've just asked me to speak on their behalf. Whether Maverick comes or goes, or doesn't come, it still is an annexation for these particular lots to come into your city. Just to let you know a little bit about Maverick. Now we're going to hit the switch here. Now, we're going to hit the switch here. There, there we go. I think everybody knows Maverick's kind of like our venture first stop. We had some pre-advertising from Dan. We also know that Jim Sherliffe conducts business at 5:00 AM at our convenience store here.
That's the advertisement right there.
What Maverick is, is one of our primary goals of our organization is to build the coolest and convenience experience on the planet. That is one of the things we go by, along with our titanium rule, which is treat everybody better than they would be expected to be treated, and those are the kind of things that Maverick does by. Currently, we are in 12 states, here in the Mountain West. There is rumors of us acquiring another competing convenience store. That should happen actually in the next couple of weeks, and so we may double in size. But, for right now, we're still just here in these 12 locations. The one that will be happening soon, though, is Montana. We'll be opening up a store for our first one up there in Helena towards the end of the year. Our operations, we have approximately 400 stores. We just had a celebration for our 400th store in Magna, Utah recently. We employ over 5,000 employees. They have health benefits, dental vision, long and short-term disability, tuition reimbursement. We like to take care of our employees. This store will approximately have 15 to 20 employees. These employees will be, receive training in 40 different aspects of the job that go from alcohol sales, to management, to customer service. And, we train our employees very well, so that they maintain the safety for our customers, and also for our store employees themselves. As you might know, what's nice to be, coming before this council, is you all are aware of what Maverick's like and what our branding looks like. We have a store in Cedar City, that's probably the closest to what we're looking at building in this location. We have culture stone, glass, board and batten, fiber cement board that decorates the outside of the building. Of course, we have our branding of Adventures First Stop, and that's what we like to, you know, support the community, and also to the people that visit the Maverick store. It's a place for you to fuel up before you go on your next adventure. Unlike your store here, I think, because I didn't walk into the store here locally, but our current branding, we have scenes of the local landscape in our stores. And as you can see here, this is, I think, from a store in Idaho, where we got some of the lakes from up in Idaho, and I think it's Idaho Falls. They're above the soda fountain machines, but we like to take, run the store with the local landscape, so that it feels a tie to the community. Environmental-wise, we do the state latest, state-of-the-art fuel leak detection systems, make sure our flexible hoses are plastic, so that they're not corrosive into the environment. We take very good care of the environment, to make sure that we're not creating any issues underground with any leaking storage tanks, or things of that nature. Landscape will tie into the natural beauty of the area we're in. And, safety-wise, we, it's one of our things that we're really focused on. We have large glass areas where our tenants are able to observe the fuel canopy. In addition, we have lighting around the site, especially towards where we have our trash locations, so we make sure that our employees are safe, along with customers as well. Along with this, we'll have low-impact lighting around here, so that we're not like a beacon to the sky to the neighbors. We use cutoff shields and those things of neighbor nature, and also use down lighting with the current LED lighting that we can use for our stores. This current location, it's off the, your southern off-ramp, off of I-15, just to the west. There's a little frontage road that goes around it. Currently, this would be the annexation plan. We started with our nine-acre parcel, that's what we're looking to acquire. Our sellers asked us to include their property, additional property to the north of us. In addition, we had to include Rick Anderson's property there on the triangle. Also, we couldn't just be an island on the other side of I-15, so we had to incorporate the land around I-15. UDOT doesn't have any issues with that. Being a state agency, they're not beholden to Parwan zoning regulations, and it's not like they were going to be building anything other than just the highways that's going through it. But, in total, our annexation for the Haslam property and Rick Anderson would be about 75 acres into the city. Currently, this is what we're proposing to do with one portion of the property, which would be a convenience store. It's approximately 6,000 square feet, just a shy underneath that. We have seven high-flow or commercial canopies. These are designed for commercial truckers, in addition to large trucks with RVs, toy haulers, things of that nature. We're not a travel center, we're still Maverick. The parking stalls you see there are for temporary parking. We don't allow overnight parking, we don't provide showers, we don't provide diesel equipment inside the stores for them to fix or repair their trucks. The intent is for them to visit our store, fuel up, get some food, and then head back out onto the roadway. In addition to the commercial canopy, we will have, at the beginning, one, two, three, seven of our four-quart, with a possibility of expanding to seven more, so that'd give us 14 fuel pumps, which would be 28 fueling locations.
And, can you clarify, I would, I know in some of the locations you offer the ethanol-free gas. I know that's sometimes a big deal for ag, they like to be able to use that, you know? Would that be offered at this location?
I'm not positive, but I assume so. I'd have to look at the fuel sketch. We're a little bit further away from the tighter design of this particular site. That's something I can note and make available to our fuel team to make sure they get what the customers want in this location.
Just while you were on that, that's why I thought of...
And sometimes the concern about this is, we're bringing in this store, what is it, do the existing convenience store that's located here in town? It's not the intent for one to replace the other. We'll keep both active. If there's a change in conditions, they may revisit it. But, from my opinion, this is serving a completely different customer base than the one that's here, well.
Yeah, I'm not comfortable going out there at 5:00 o'clock. I need to, I need to go to my little store, okay?
And I just looked on my, one of our Maverick apps that we have. It looks like that was recently remodeled, and it seemed like it was, yeah, recently taken care of, so it looks like it's one that's meant to last.
That was news to me, I didn't realize that they weren't franchisees. So, like literally Maverick just owns them, it's family-owned, so it's not a matter of competing with a local owner that might get hurt by it, you know, Maverick to Maverick.
No, they'd shut it down with that one being so close, but...
I don't think they would. So, Crystal and Chuck Maglet are the owners of Maverick. All the stores are independently owned, I mean, owned by them. We do have some that are, we ground lease, but we maintain those leases. So, these are all held by the company and a private family. This is an example of what the floor plan will look like. I think it's a little bit different than the one down in Cedar City that's the first, off the first exit. This particular one is similar to it, other than it has a rear door that helps us go out to the commercial canopy. Typical board and batten, of course, we'll adhere to any of the building requirements they have, you have with the city with regards to amount of rock, amount of fiber cement, if you allow stucco, or the height of the structure, we'll, of course, adhere to those. But, this is our typical, prototypical for this store. And, as you can see, the large basing in front, where we have full view of that four-quart canopy. Typical branding on the commercial canopy, and also the four-quart, and our typical color scheme, which would be similar to the one that you have down in Cedar City. I'd just like to reiterate, Maverick's, I'm just representing the landlords at this point. Again, it's just, they're petitioning for the city to be annexed in, with our two parcels, well, actually three parcels, and also UDOT right away. And we're just happy to support them, and do whatever it needs to, to help them along the way with this project.
Well, and I'm glad you say that, because a lot of times, I mean, the reality of it is, is Haslam owns two parcels, but it's a larger square. Rick Anderson, which has nothing to do with the project you're describing, in fact, it's on the other side of the road. You have two property owners, the property owners are looking to annex. The reason they are, is a potential purchase by Maverick, but it does not mean... That's why you don't see Maverick anywhere on here, that's not trying to be whatever. It's because the property owners, this is, I'm guessing maybe one of the conditions of the sale is that the annexation goes through, or whatever. I don't, we don't need to get into that, but it is the current ownership that has to apply for annexation. If Maverick had already bought the property, then it would be Maverick applying. Instead, it is the Haslums, but I'm really glad that Rich came and made the presentation, because a lot of times, the city, the public wants to know what's going on, and sometimes that's not always well-known, and then rumors abound, and so it's really nice just to know this is what's being considered for the location. And when I say excited, it's not every day that you have a potential large annexation by one of your interchanges with a very large player that's looking to put in a potential large, I mean, large, a commercial site that would impact the city. Most of the impacts in this case are going to, I don't want to act like I'm trying to sell this, because there's different things to consider, but, you know, we talk about revenue, we talk about, where are we going to do this, where are we going to do that? You're going to have this store, which mainly serves freeway traffic. They're going to get off, they're going to get gas, buy food, get back on the freeway. The city, if annexation happens, if the purchase happens and the store is built, the city would benefit to the tune of additional property tax and sales tax. Of course, we have to figure out infrastructure, we have to figure out utilities, we have to figure out, you know, traffic and roads and some of these things. So, there is a lot of things to consider, but it's not every day that Parwan is entertaining something like this. So, I'm just glad that it's out in the open, and this is what we're talking about, so.
Man, to kind of go along with that, we are working with UDOT, with the interchanges, to make sure that we're not having any traffic problems on I-15 or within your community. Mr. Jensen also talked about the extension of utility services as part of us annexing to the city instead of going to the county. We're going to be approaching the city, of course, for our water, power, and...
Sewer.
And sewer, but one of the benefits is the sewer's already running adjacent to the property.
Yeah, but nothing else is out there.
Right, nothing's out there.
The loop line for water is down across the freeway.
Yeah, water and power are just this side of the freeway. Sewer goes right under the freeway and right in front of the road on 20...
200.
200 West.
Yeah.
It is 2200 on that side as well, so. So, it is, I mean luckily, it's not, we're not talking about a full, how the heck are we going to figure this out? We have utilities close, and one utility's right there, so.
That's the harder one to bore under a road, because it's gravity-fed, and so sewer's nice to have. Water, we're able to bore underneath the highway, and there's existing conduits for Parwan Power to pull cable through. If you have any other questions, I'm here to answer anything you have as best I can. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, there is no additional discussion? At this time, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the petition for annexation to the Haslam Anderson annexation.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Is it a roll call?
Yeah.
No, it's not a roll.
Not a resolution.
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, thank you, motion carries. Okay, now moving now to item number 12. This is a single event permit, local consent for Sweet Pea Farm and Orchard, the farm-to-table dinner.
This is just a local consent for alcohol sales for a single event at Sweet Pea Farm and Orchard, to be held on September 16th, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM.
Is this separate from the one that we did last...
It is, yes.
Week, or two weeks ago?
Yes.
Just a different event?
Yes.
Is this your first, the first event?
Would you like to approach the microphone, please? Thank you.
Sorry, the first event, they're just using our property, that's not our event.
Oh, I got you, okay.
This event is the one we've done every year for seven years. And there was some confusion in previous years as to how to get permission, and Berg just signed my papers and gave me permission. He didn't realize that there was a different way, and so we've done it for seven years.
That's what I thought, so I was, I'm just glad that you came, so you could answer all my questions, because I was wondering why we were doing it, because I knew that you had done it in the past.
Yes.
And it's, okay.
And so, and there's, I mean, we've done it a few different ways, but we've always followed Department of Alcohol and Tobacco and all of that. We've followed their rules, but the last few years, Berg has just signed that with the understanding that he's the one that has to make sure that if we're doing that, they have people patrolling, and so he's just, I didn't know that it wasn't appropriate terms.
That there was a different way?
Yeah.
And we in the office didn't know that that was happening either, so. Anyway, so, we're doing it like it should be done.
All right, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the single evening event.
I'll make a motion to approve the single event permit for Sweet Pea Farm and Orchard, farm-to-table, September...
16th.
16th, sorry.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now moving to item number 13. This is a vote on the Bike Park location, and it will be presented by Dan Justin.
Okay, so before I talk on that, Larry is here from Planning and Zoning, and Larry has looked into, this is, this would actually, Larry has something he wants to present, which is good. He's done a little bit of research, and it will impact our Bike Park and pickleball discussion. He's been researching, talking to the state, clarifying. He's going to basically make sure that we follow our own rules. Larry?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. So, as Dan was so kind to introduce, I'm really going to talk about the city must follow its own rules. So, in that regard, I got interested in this, and we started talking at the last meeting about, "Let's vote on where to put a pickleball court and where to put a bicycle park." And, so we had locations, and I just, as I go down this path, so we have the general plan, which is a guideline for us, that includes the future land use map, which is a guideline. That's a planning document, that years ago, somebody said, "Here's what we want to do with our land, and here's the approved uses." Then, after the flume, we have zoning designations. And where there can be some confusion, is when we look at the flume, the planned uses are color-coded, similar to what the zoning map is color-coded. There are different colors and everything, but they're colors. And so you look at a flume, and you go, "Oh, this must be..." You can be tricked into thinking, "This is a zoning designation." That is not the case, that's a planning, a planned use. The zoning map is land use code, and those are zoning districts. And because they're land use code, they have to be approached cautiously, and we have to follow those guidelines, those rules, basically. So, as I go forward, so in our residential zones, which is what the Valentine Peak Sports Complex is, that area is zoned residential currently. And you would look, and you'd go, "Wow, we already have courts and things there." So, evidently, those are grandfathered in, probably sometime in the past, of course. The only place that, well, let me back up. So, in residential, we are allowed to have recreational courts by conditional use. So, the conditional use has been already approved legislatively by a previous city council. So, that can be an administrative action by the city. However, when the city decides they want to impose some mitigations on that conditional use permit, that may be yet another legislative action. And, as an alternative, if we wanted to rezone for something like a bicycle park, because that is, that's considered like a baseball field or a soccer field, it's not a recreational court, so to speak, that doesn't fit into a residential zone. That, currently, that fits into our industrial, not industrial, highway services and general commercial zones. And we don't have any of that out there. So, now, we would have to figure out where we're going to go, and how we're going to approach that. And my recommendation to the council is, before we settle on these locations, you can look at a location and say, "We favor that," but I recommend that you don't vote on, and choose a specific location until you get a recommendation from Planning and Zoning, because we're going to have to do some homework to figure out... because we're going to have to do some homework to figure out how we're going to approach all that and what we're going to do. If we have to rezone something, that's going to trigger public hearings, and if we decide to issue a conditional use permit for a bicycle park in the residential zone out there, that would also trigger public hearings because that's not pre-approved. It's not in the code yet. So in our flume, just to show you how they sort of match up or don't, the flume talks about civic uses, governmental uses, these are all commas. Civic comma, governmental comma, community comma, school comma, agricultural comma, and slash, urban reserve. Those are all the planned uses for that property out in that area, yet it's currently zoned, or zoned residential. So it doesn't support all those uses necessarily.
On both sides of the street?
Um.
Like on the, on both sides? Or just the one side that we were talking about to put the bike park?
Basically, most of our parks and everything we have is not zoned for governmental use. It is in the future land use map as governmental, but it never got rezoned when we did most of what we've done. So what Larry's saying is, is if we're going to, we're going to do this right moving forward, we need to rezone it or get a conditional use permit, leave it zoned R1, but get a conditional use permit. But basically, all Valentine Sports Complex is in a residential zone right now, and if we were to add something new to there, we should consider getting a conditional use permit on ourselves.
So is the fairgrounds?
It's, it's same.
It's residential?
Um, I believe part of, part of the fairgrounds is R1A, where we're talking about where the baseball fields are and all this is R1. Future land use, it's blue, which is government civic whatever, community, but the actual zoning is R1.
What about the water retention pond?
It is also part of, it is, everything that we owned, all the property that we owned-
It's still a-
-is future land use map governmental, and the existing zoning never got changed.
So any, so my, in summary, I'm suggesting that we don't get the cart too far before the horse. It's all, it's all great for discussion and probably work meetings, but I-
So my question is, is if we vote on that location, and Larry, I mean, this, this just recently came up, and Larry's like, I want to talk to you before the meeting, and we never got a chance to meet, so we talked right here real quick and said, hey, I want to talk about this first. So the question is, is by voting on where we're going to put it, do we need to actually rezone it before we vote on where do we put it? Or do we basically just vote on, we could vote on taking it to Planning Commission to start that process to get a conditional use permit, but the problem is, is until we know where we're going to put it, like I'm thinking, this is the way, I'm just, I'm just thinking this process through. We need to decide where we want to put it, and then if we decide that's where we want to put it, then we go through the process of legally switching it so that we could put it there. I don't know.
Can't we vote on the side conditional on the approval for whatever recommendation from-
Conditional on rezoning it?
Yeah.
Or getting a conditional use permit?
Yeah.
On Planning and Zoning.
Yeah, I, I don't see anything in the code that prevents us from getting this all in order. I think that we just need to work through it.
The other option that was talked about is you can amend your ordinance to include that use in those zones.
Yes.
But that would allow private property to also do the same?
Whatever you do, you could do as a conditional use permit, you amend your ordinance or you can do the other. But, but he's, Larry's right, you cannot, you cannot authorize a use that's not permitted in that zone, even if you're the city. You have to follow your own rules.
So if we do a conditional use permit, that goes through Planning and Zoning?
Yep.
And then you recommend here, or you just issue a-
Conditional use permits are granted at that level.
Let's separate-
Or at their level, at that level.
I'd recommend, excuse me, I'm sorry. I'd recommend we separate the two proposed uses because the recreational courts fall in a different category than the bicycle park. So recreational courts are already approved under, as a conditional use in the R1 zone. You wouldn't have to change anything.
Just get a conditional use permit?
Well, and that's administrative. I mean, you can almost, you can do that in the office now. You can impose mitigations. The only thing that you, that would be lacking is public input because it's already been approved by a previous council. It's listed as an approved conditional use already in the code.
So in residential areas, they, an individual needs to get a conditional use permit, that can be administratively issued?
Yes.
So that, okay, but they need to get one for, like, they want to put a pickleball court in their backyard?
Right.
It ought to be a building permit, basically.
Pardon?
Uh, just a building permit would go through that same process.
Well, I'm not clear on that yet. I haven't got that far down that road because I got different instructions a while back, and so I'm still looking into that. But I do know that you need a conditional use permit if you're in a residential area and you're going to build a recreational court. Now, that would include a basketball court and several, a tennis court.
So typically, I, I'm, we just went through this with somebody who wanted to do a gym business in a residential area which required a conditional use permit. Our code says that the zoning administrator can grant that unless there is people within the three-hundred-foot radius that oppose it, and in this case, we had somebody oppose it, which said it had to go to Planning and Zoning, which we did.
Right.
And that was for a business license within a residential zone. We're not going to get a business license on ourselves to do a park or a resident of, you know what I'm saying? So now we're talking about land use and whether you would need to go to Planning and Zoning for a conditional use permit or not.
Right.
I think that's different than, than a at-home business is all I'm trying to show the difference.
And I think a conditional use permit is different than a building permit.
Yes, it is. Well, in my recommendation, and it's not necessarily a requirement, I think the city in the interest of transparency, and I think Dave Burton mentioned this earlier, you know, he's interested in making sure that the residents in that area get a chance to speak out their mind about the presence of pickleball courts in the neighborhood. You know, a public hearing, if you chose to do that, would provide citizens that opportunity. So it's for consideration.
So we've kind of got too far away from Bike Park, but this applies to both, and that's why we thought we'd talk about it. So officially, about Bike Park, you're thinking that Bike Park is different than a recreational court-
Right.
-based on how you read R1?
Right, and for Bike Park, there's not an approved conditional use, so it would automatically require a public hearing if they, if we-
To rezone it?
-want a conditional use permit to do that.
To re-
The other option would be rezone, which would also require a public hearing.
So you're saying we could do a public hearing based on the way you look at it? I haven't looked at it at all as far as other than that.
I don't, I don't think you can do that.
What's that?
Your conditional use permit gives you permitted uses. Those are administratively applied. They're not legislative because you've already done it.
Right.
Then you should have a conditional use permit sheet that you go through a checklist. Do you treat everybody exactly the same? A checklist, ask questions, you go through each of those questions, and then the administrative staff, if you want Planning and Zoning to hear that and do that, then they will ask the question and how they can fix each one of those things, answer that question, what conditions will be put on that to make sure that, that any adverse effect to the community is mitigated. But once they're permitted, they are permitted, and the only way they are not permitted is if you have a situation where, where you cannot mitigate the adverse impacts. So basically, once you have a conditional use permit and you put it in there, it's basically permitted with conditions, but you've got to have very sound basis to deny that conditional use permit.
Right.
So in an R1 zone, these are the conditional uses that are spelled out in an R1 zone. Child daycare, nursery, cluster subdivision, I won't go into the whole paragraph, golf course, planned development, recreational courts, which is what you were talking about, home occupations, which is what I was talking about, daycare centers and preschools. So it doesn't specifically say Bike Park. Do we, do we say that this is a recreational court?
So I took the liberty of just going in and Googling what was a recreational court because we don't have a definition in, in Parowan. It doesn't appear, well, and it looked real hard in Utah, and I was time constrained, so I ended up with Saratoga, California. I apologize. But it says recreation court means any plank paved or otherwise hard-surfaced outdoor area used primarily for athletic activities other than swimming pools and including, but not limited to, courts for tennis, racquetball, paddleball, squash, basketball, and similar activities.
So this is hard-surfaced and it is recreational. Does it fit a court?
We could discuss that. We would probably have to vote. I can't speak for the rest of the commission without some discussion, but that's a reasonable point.
I can tell you this, that if it is a, if it is vague, this court will rule against the city. They always rule in favor of-
The landowner, which is us.
Landowner. So I'm just telling you, they always vote in favor, they say you have an obligation to make it clear if the city ordinance is not clear, then it's in favor of the landowner.
We are the landowners.
What do you, what do you, I'm going to put you on the spot, Justin. What do you recommend? What do you think we ought to do?
Well, I don't know what you're talking about, so, sorry. But if, if, if you have recreational courts, again, you're going to, you've got to define what a recreational court is. It's certainly, one could argue, whether it's sports, is, is, is bike riding in a recreational park a sport? Well, they have it in the X L games. It's absolutely a sport.
Skateboard?
Skateboard, they have those in the field.
There's no skateboards here, though.
I know, but you understand what I'm saying. They have them as sports, and so to say that's not a sport, I don't think you could say it's not a sport. We're, we're talking about recreational courts. We're not talking about whether they're sports or-
I thought you said, as you read the definition, it's sports on a court.
Well, that's Saratoga, California.
Yeah, yeah, so we don't have a definition. That's my point.
Yeah, yes.
So you probably need to define that, and again, that's look at your ordinance and determine what you're going to do and define what a recreational court is, and that's just an amendment of your ordinance.
Anyway, my intent is not to fix this or figure it out tonight. It's just a heads up. You have any other questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
So thanks, Larry. I appreciate you coming up on that. So just to remind everybody, it was in the work meeting last week, we discussed the area, and just to remind everybody, I mean, it was pretty much consensus that everybody thought this was a good idea. We do have a grant to build a Bike Park. Bike Park. It's not a skate park. This is for bikes, specifically for bikes. It is a track, the location that we selected was north of, across the street from the parking lot of Valentine Sports Park Complex. There's that triangle of land that the back half is being used for a storm drain recharge area. The front part of it was specifically not used so that it could be used for another purpose, especially since it's right there on the street, and so this was just meant to be an action meeting to vote on it and then move forward. We have the grant. We wanted to get building. So this is, Larry threw a monkey wrench in there. It was a, it was, it was not, I don't think any ill intent in doing so. He's just saying you guys got to follow your own rules, so that's where we're at.
Okay, so what do we do? Like, we want-
Can we, can we say the location is here and order the city to go through the process of getting the zone changed or conditional use or whatever it has to do so that we have the-
Right.
-location set-
Yeah.
-and then proceed to get permission to build the court, or build the-
The park. I think that's, that's, yeah, that's it, that's what Dave's recommendation was. Let's select this location, conditional upon it, going through this process.
Yeah.
Yeah. Let's do it.
I think that sounds good. Do you feel good about that?
I hate those. There is nothing against law that says you can't do a conditional motion, but when you do that for yourself, what are you going to say when your citizen comes in and says, I want this, can you approve it subject to its conditional being, you know, getting the zone changed? And you're going to say, no, we don't give conditions like that. We get it done first and then-
But we need to decide to go to take this to Planning and Zoning. I guess that could be the motion, decide to take this to Planning and Zoning and-
That would be a better motion than a conditional-
Hey, and I move that we, we take the location of the Bike Park and present it to Planning and Zoning.
And I'll second that.
Would you have to say the location of the-
Yeah, well, yeah.
The location is what we decided last time.
Yeah, and it's what I just described.
Yeah.
It's the parcel immediately north of the parking lot of Valentine Sports Park.
About five hundred east and two hundred north.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second.
I seconded it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, moving now to item number fourteen. This is set the date for primary election canvas of votes for September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, presented by Callie Bassett.
As city recorder, one of my responsibilities is to serve as the election official for the city. For our elections, ever since I've worked for the city, we have contracted with the county to, to handle our ballots and counting the ballots, et cetera. It's interesting this year because of, I can't remember what his office is, but because Chris Stewart-
Congress.
He's your representative.
Thank you. Because he resigned. All of the cities in the state have been mandated to work with their counties on this election. The election ballots, just as an update, the election ballots were mailed out on August fifteenth as per Utah Code, and the primary election is September fifth. As the municipal legislative body, you are also the body, the Board of Municipal Canvasers for Parowan City. The Board of Municipal Canvasers shall meet to give, to canvass the returns at the usual place of meeting of the municipal legislative body for canvassing of returns from municipal primary election no sooner than seven days after the election and no later than fourteen days after the election. The duties of the Board of Canvasers is that the Board of Canvasers shall canvass the election returns publicly, reviewing the summary reports prepared by the election officer and any ballots, registers, books, or forms requested by the Board of Canvasers, and certify the votes cast. Each person voted for and for or, and against each ballot proposition voted upon at the election. Iron County Clerk John Whitaker has asked that all cities in Iron County hold their canvass on September nineteenth. That is fourteen days after the election. They've asked this to help them with the process that they go through. It's called carrying the ballots. I don't know what that means, but it will help that process go smoother. And so I would ask that council, please set the date for the election canvas, election canvas for September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, which is Tuesday night.
So we'd have to-
So we need a time, don't we?
City Council?
Be a special meeting, yeah.
It'd be a special meeting. And you can, you can, you can choose what time you'd like to meet.
Okay.
Okay, so we need a motion to set the date for the primary election canvas for September nineteenth and a time, a suggestion of a time that we can agree on.
I'll make a motion, we set the date for primary election canvas of votes of September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. I'd say six o'clock.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. So that's our time and date for our primary election canvas of votes. Thank you. Okay, now moving to item number fifteen, RFP for Parowan City Attorney, presented by Dan Justin.
So, yeah, I have this one. We believe that it's a best practice to periodically review our professional services. I'll say relationships because contracts, it applies to some, it doesn't apply to all of our professional services. The city attorney is actually appointed in our code. It doesn't, there's no, there's no contract set per our code, just like same thing-
like, same thing, um, with, with other things. Um, we believe it's a best practice to review these occasionally, whether it be city engineer, um, our, our audit firm, our accounting firm that does our independent audit, an attorney. We haven't looked at attorney for, it's been a long time. Justin's been with us a long time. And, um, so, we're gonna look at that and, um, specifically, some of the things that we're looking at is considering restructuring, um, the structure of our, of our, um, legal services. Uh, one of the things I wanna point out is, it does say in our code, it actually spells out, you know, pretty clearly what the city attorney does. One of the things that it says is, um, basically you have civil duties, um, supporting, you know, being here in this meeting, um, supporting professional staff in their jobs, you know, assist in, in reviewing resolutions, contracts, agreements. You know, if the city gets sued by somebody, we lean on our attorney to help us out with that. Or if the elected officials have questions and so forth, right? That's the civil side. And then you have the criminal side. Um, because the, the city has criminal code, if somebody breaks that code, then those cases have to get prosecuted. It, it actually says in our code that the city attorney will do the prosecution. And depending on, on how that works, the size of the city, um, sometimes, um, that's done by the city attorney. And in the case of Parowan, that is done currently by the city attorney. Um, Mr. Wayman's office does that for us. Um, other cities rely on the county to do that. Um, they are related, obviously, 'cause they're both attorney-related, but we're considering potentially splitting this off into being two different things. Um, maybe, uh, we've, we've considered having the county do that, um, potentially not changing it and continuing to have the, the current, the way that we do it now currently. Um, the other, the other question is, is do you go with like a flat rate or do you go with like a variable hourly rate? So, um, this RFP is basically to consider these options. We would put it out, um, as a request for proposals to the market. Uh, certainly invite, uh, Mr. Wayman to, um, put a bid in on that. And we may have other bids from other attorneys as well, which would be considered, um, in a future council. Um, we don't have to go through this process, um, of, of bidding it out, but I think it would be a good, um, a good exercise to, um, to look at maybe different options of splitting these two things out separately, um, and potentially doing it as a, um, as a flat rate versus an hourly rate. My personal opinion is, I think that it would be a good idea to, um, stick with a, a flat rate and, um, potentially having the county do the prosecuting for us. Um, and then potentially looking at a variable rate on the hourly, an hourly rate on everything else. Um, one, there's advantages and disadvantages, and we can go into it if you would like. One of the reasons why, um, there's advantages to a flat rate is that it's really good from a budget perspective. We know what it is. The disadvantage of that is, is you have your attorney who is doing maybe a whole bunch of work in one month and not as much work in another month and, um, and potentially feels like it's unfair when they're doing too much work than that you're getting paid and not as fair. I mean, and, and of course, they're making great money when they don't have to do as much work for us. And from the city's perspective, um, you know, we may have higher expectations or lower expectations. When you have a flat rate, you ca- all of that kind of blends into the, into this check that we write. And, um, I'm of the opinion that good contracts make good business relationships and good con- like a good fence makes good neighbors. That's one of the reasons why I think a variable hourly rate is nice, 'cause we're looking at a detailed bill. And if our bill is really high, we're look, you know, we're looking at it and we're saying, "Why is our bill so high?" Maybe we're actually leaning too much on our attorney. Maybe that thing that we just went through, you know, it's actually recognizing what it costs. Um, the attorney that's billing us, of course, is feeling like they're being paid for their hourly work they're putting into it. Therefore, it stays as a priority to them versus if they're putting a lot of work in for the same exact paycheck, there's some resentment that could build up. So, that's one of the reasons why I like the concept of an hourly rate. Um, on the civil side, I think that it can be kind of concerning on the prosecution side. And I feel the same way about defense contracts as well. Um, because anytime you're kind of incentivizing what could happen, um, whether something goes to court or doesn't go to court, when a plea deal is struck or not, then when you have that hourly rate, maybe it introduces some problems there. So, these are just some of my personal feelings. Um, the RFP as written basically says that attorneys would propose the fee structure and the methodology that they would prefer. And, um, and we'll put it out there. Um, and i- in, I think it's twelve days from tonight is when, in the, in the RFP that, that I suggested that we would put a close on that, which would be September thirteenth? September fifth. Sorry. That's, our, 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 our bid process says ten days, um, and so that would actually be, I think, twelve days, right? 'Cause ten days would be on Sunday. Eleven days is Monday, but it's Labor Day. So, twelve days would, would put it, um, on Tuesday, the fifth. So, anyways, um, talked with, uh, Mr. Wayman about this. Um, this is in no way a, a slight to Mr. Wayman's office and, and, um, we'll see where this goes. It's possible that our, um, our options could potentially cost us more. It could cost us, it could just change the nature of it to a variable amount, which, which we then have to kind of live with from a budgeting standpoint. Um, or we may just stick with a flat rate. So, anyways, that's, that's what we're looking at doing with RFP if you guys wanna move forward. I don't know if there's any thoughts or questions or any input from our current attorney.
No, there's no discussion. I move that we put out an RFP for Parowan City Attorney.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. So, moving now from our action meeting to our work meeting, item number sixteen, proposed pickleball court location. And we have Kim Skinner, Julie White, and they're going, are you both coming up?
Yes, Julie.
Okay.
Well, come on, Mr. Skinner. We wanna see you too.
(laugh) All right. So, good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager, Citizen, Parowan. Hi, Justin.
Hey, how you doing?
Good to see you, Hallie. My name's Julie White, and I have lived here for thirty-two years, established a successful business for twenty years, and have recently retired. And I love pickleball. We have an unofficial pickleball community as well as citizens here that are excited to get a pickleball location, plans, and construction expedited soon. We would like to present to you our community letter and signatures of choosing the most popular reasonable location for pickleball courts. Valentine's Peak Sports Complex, as described in our letter, as the three acres immediately west of the sports complex would be the most obvious site. As you know, we have a limited time with our grant, and procuring a location is vital at this time. We need to present the use of this grant ASAP. My opinion is this can be done before the end of the year. In light of what we've just heard, I don't know. As you know, Cedar City has just finished courts as well as putting on their first tournament league and classes. Cedar City League has three different times a day to sign up. There's a forty people max in that league with eight courts times three. That's a hundred and twenty signups plus a sublist. Lessons were a five dollar hour lesson. They expected maybe ten to fifteen to sign up. They had fifty. Cedar City Tournament expected fifty to sixty to sign up, and a hundred and fifty people signed up for this tournament. The construction took three months. So, you know the potential for this aspect of use of these courts. We can get resources in building promptly. I am sure with help of our council, residents, and possible collaborations such as USAPA, who has experts, such as what they call a sector lead. And that sector lead goes through helping with the community. This person would identify local support that will liaise with their facilities, development team to work through their influencing phase as well as project management. Although we are not an official pickleball club, a collaboration with the community and city can be possible in helping to maintain the courts, hold events, et cetera. These are but options for pickleball in our community, helping to make it a better municipality. Thank you for your attention, and let's get this into a vote, all, with all due respect, soon. That being said, I guess the vote would be getting it into a conditional use permit and then moving on with the pickleball courts as you would with the bicycle courts or bicycle park. That's all I've got. I've got some information here for you. I've got our letter with our thirty-four signatures from residents all over, not only the pickleball community, but I have residents around the area where the pickleball courts would go, so you know. And I also have communities that have developed pickleball community clubs that help the city. They're nonprofit organizations, and they help the city with helping to maintain the pickleball courts. They help to create events. It, it's a phenomenal thing that can happen between the two, the community and the city. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
You want me to update with some information that I found out?
Thank you, Julie.
Well, we're on pickleball. So, it, it was suggested in our last meeting that I go approach the county, and I said I'd go talk to Maria, see what she thought. Um, Maria basically said, um, (laugh) she said no.
Be nice. Okay, that's all we need to know.
(inaudible).
She said no to the county just building courts for us themselves.
(inaudible).
No, no, no. I'm just, in our last meeting, there was a suggestion that we go ask the county and see if they would build some courts that we would take over maintenance of. And, and Maria pretty much said no. She did give me a carrot, she did give me a rabbit hole to go down, and I'm currently going down that rabbit hole, looking at an, another possible option, which I'm not prepared to talk about yet because it is something else that the county is kind of, kind of looking at, but that's their thing. I don't wanna talk about it. But if they move forward, we may wanna say, "Hey, maybe we could have, do some pickleball courts there." So, I don't, I think that that's a long shot, and certainly when the county is ready to talk about that, we could consider that. So, all I'm saying is, is I wanted to report back that, that Maria said that's not really a possibility. She said, "We would, we would let you build them somewhere on the, on the property," um, which doesn't do us really any good, other than, I mean, we have our own property right there on that same area. So, that really doesn't get us any, any farther along. So, I, so, I don't, do you want me to exchange back and forth with, uh, public or-
Do you wanna come back up to the microphone since you're the person on the agenda?
(inaudible) confused. They just gave this presentation. I was kind of listening to how, what you want the county to do. Well, we, we have this wonderful city, and we've got this wonderful council. We've got many, many interested and lots of pickleball players that wanna play here and have courts. I don't wanna go to Cedar City, you know, every day and go play pickleball. I wanna play here. I have a lot of great people that play here. What, what's wrong with you guys creating a pickleball court? I mean, I'm not understanding. You have the property. You have the-
What is your, you have a question for me?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. You're, you're talking about the county. What is it with-
I'm just reporting back that in the last meeting, the suggestion was that I go ask. I'm just reporting back on that.
Okay. So, I'm asking what the, what about the city? What can the city do? Anybody?
Well, I would say that I've had a lot of people come to me with interest in these courts. And, and as Cindy mentioned, you know, we've said there could possibly be other locations. And that's because people in the community have said, "Hey, what about this location?" Or, "What about that location?" And it isn't, you know, that we would go into debt or raise taxes. It's just, let's look at different options. And-
Right.
I agree that it's something that if the community wants to do, resources will be available. And I think, again, I've written for grants, but other people are offering and willing to write for grants also. And there are also community members that have offered to help with some of the expenses. I don't know to what extent. But I would say that it's a direction that you're asking for.
Right. And if you look at some of the papers, you investigate into a lot of other communities, Lake Havasu is one of them. I think it's Woodbridge, Virginia, Eugene, Oregon. They've done a lot of where they, they've created pickleball clubs that help with the community and collaborate with that. And that helps to create, uh, the more revenue and everything else that the city is asking for, along with a collaboration to where you're not going broke, you know, maintaining courts.
I think what the, what our problem is, the county gave us two hundred thousand dollars from, from our grant. But one of the conditions was that we had to have enough courts to hold tournaments. Am I wrong?
That's right, that's right.
The problem is, the city does not have the financial resources to build eight courts in order to, to have the standard for, uh, a tournament. So, not only are we trying to decide where we're gonna put them, but that's why Dan went to talk to the county to see if maybe they could build some, and we would put in our money to have enough to have the eight that the county requires for the grant that we're giving.
Okay, so from my understanding, is that two hundred thousand out of a three hundred and sixty thousand dollar grant, some of it was given to Cedar City?
No.
So, we got the two hundred thousand?
No.
This is, I don't know if it's a rumor or not. This is what I heard. So, and that we were supposed to, with an agreement next year, to get maybe up to two hundred thousand more. That's four hundred thousand dollars to build or less to build courts. It doesn't cost nine hundred thousand dollars to build pickleball courts. Really, it doesn't.
Well, what did Cedar spend?
That's what they say they spent, and that's what, whatever the bids were. But I'm telling you, I don't think that's what it costs to build pickleball courts. Nine hundred thousand dollars. I don't believe that.
So, I can comment on that a little bit because, um, I looked at what Cedar City built, um, like right down to what the proposal was of the bids. Um, and a lot of, most of that expense went into the, the actual courts, the post-tension concrete, the acrylic, and the netting, you know, the actual court. Not all of it, but a lot of it did.
I almost assume it would mostly be the concrete, but okay.
Yeah, the concrete is a-
Concrete's everywhere, all over.
It's the single biggest line item.
It doesn't necessarily have to be something that we have to do. We can have more generic.
Sure. And so, um, and when, when we were looking at this really hard at the Lions Park, um, I was trying to figure out as I dissected the bids, you know, how we could value engineer this and get good courts, but not, not maybe spend as much on all the, you know, extra stuff. They have a lot of space in between the courts, which that concrete isn't post-tension, but it's still concrete. Concrete's expensive.
Yes, it is.
They have, they have some water features. Um, they have-
I do.
Some seating, of course, lighting. Lighting is a, is a, is a factor. They had to improve the end of the parking lot and put some, um, approach and ADA ramps and all of this stuff. That's how they got to nine hundred thousand. So, um, as I looked at it from the cons, from the, from the perspective of the Lions Park, I tried to figure out, you know, us making some assumptions, you know, could we get the post-tension concrete cheaper on a yardage ba- yardage basis? Um, making an assumption there, assuming that maybe we could get the acrylic done. And we're looking at people around town that have built courts, and they've built them cheaper. They built same thing as far as post-tension concrete and acrylic, and they've got much better bids than the type of bids that we saw Cedar City got.
Well, that's because it's a different court. It's a sports court. It's not post-tension courts.
So, but I mean, even, even apples to apples, post-tension concrete and acrylic, I'm seeing that people around here have gotten pricing that's been cheaper.
Again, I, I don't think post-tension courts cost you as much as you think. I think it's more the concrete and whatever else you're looking at.
I'm looking at exactly-
All that, all that ground, you can build the courts. You don't have to have as much concrete- You can build the courts. You don't have to have as much concrete. You don't have to have benches. I mean, it takes time. It takes time to build up. I just don't think that that's, you know...
Can I finish what I'm saying?
I'm sorry.
So, I figured that we could build them cheaper than Cedar built them.
Yeah.
Um, if you look at the raw math, Cedar built eight courts for $900,000. That's, that's more than $100,000 per court, if you want to look at it from a per court, per court basis. Um, I think we could build them cheaper than that. The question is, is how much per court could we get them for? And, and that's, that's, I mean, we got to figure that out. But let's say we could get it down to $50,000, $60,000. That's a stretch. Maybe we could. Um, could we build four courts, um, and do that at the Lyons Park where we don't have to do any of the other outside work? The grading is really flat, all of that. I was thinking, you know what, if we could get, take the $200,000, um, potentially we could get some of this better pricing on concrete and things, still build good courts, but, um, a lot of times if this is a government project, they'll throw a high number at it. That's the nature of contracting, right? Could we get some more favorable contracts? We wouldn't have to build any of the outside stuff and that's why it was like, hey, we can pull a rabbit out of a hat and maybe we could pull this off for $200,000 or $300,000 and get three or four courts. That's what I was kind of working on. Um, obviously we would want to have room that we could expand wherever we go because that's one of the things we've talked about. So, in order to do that, at the Lyons Park, I'm, I'm focusing on Lyons Park for a reason. We needed to update our designs so we actually had something that we could turn over to a contractor and say, build this. Um, we needed to update the designs that we had already paid for. We'd paid good money for. But to update it, we needed $5,000. Um, another update is when we last talked, we were, we were gonna, we were assigned, I was assigned whatever, to go to Jones and DeMille, who had already done some of the preliminary work on that site at Valentine Peak.
Yep. I'm hearing you.
That, um, I just want to make sure that you're listening.
I'm hearing you.
So, we went to Jones and DeMille, said you've already done LiDAR, some of the surveying. Um, what would you, what would you take to, um, to, to give us some designs that we could do that? They've, um, given us an estimate of $62,500 to get us ready to hire contractors.
Have you got another bid?
At that site. This email came in like an hour ago. So, we can definitely go talk to other engineering firms or contractors that have the ability to create plans. We need plans that we can actually work from. Sticker shock, that's, that's, I think we could all say. But, I mean, I think originally, this was back in 2016. I don't, I don't remember. I don't know. I'm looking at you, Molly, because you have an amazing memory.
It was like, I think it was either 16 or 30 thou, it was quite a bit of money.
Thirty-something that we paid for the plan that...
To get those plans that we got that we didn't end up building from. And one of the points I was going to make is I've had people from the community say, well, I would help with the engineering or I have an engineer that would help with that. And then the same thing with the cost on some of the components. Um, from what I understand, we have sports court surface or acrylic surface. Some people have an opinion on, you know, post-tension or not post-tension. Um, even in the room that we initially kind of talked about things, I think there were different opinions with almost everyone around the table. So that's kind of the harder part for me is exactly what we can come to consensus on that we're even going to bid out. But I do believe people will come to the city to, to help with, with this. I really do. And I know everyone's always like, our taxes are going to go up or we're going to go into debt. I don't think we have, as a council, shown that that's what we do. So, we're trying to figure out how to work with what we have and we definitely believe in the community when they say, hey, we'll help you.
Okay. Thank you.
Did that help? Okay.
So that's my update, was what the county said and literally, this was like an hour. I think this, I think I received this email like five o'clock.
And just with the engineer and everything, they were using the previous work they'd done on that site.
Well, I think it's got to be noted that the Valentine's Peak, because of that land, the slope and the, you know, just the topography and the raw land, it's going to take more money to design and utilize that area than an area that has, you know, a decent grade and has... And there's not the amenities we talked about, the bathrooms, the restrooms are worth quite a bit and things. I mean, there are some, but it's not as accessible and convenient, so.
You have to walk around through the rubber fields. And I, I don't even think we're considering at this point, building bathrooms in this, if you want to call it a phased approach, in phase one, but we...
Didn't the citizens say they weren't in Valentine?
That's what I was coming back to is...
No, 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 Valentine. The citizens were...
Lyons Park.
Yeah.
Yes, they don't want it there.
That's where, that's where all our amenities and that's would be the...
Right.
But if the citizens don't want it, then we have to look at the one that's going to cost more money.
I've always been, my biggest fear of Lyons Park and, and, um, this came up in my conversation with Maria. Maria would love if I just, if she knew I was just quoting her. She actually lives close to the new park, the new, the new courts that Cedar City put in. She lives like a block away. She's like, those things are so loud. Six in the morning, all I hear is grunting and, and, and the ball being hit. And she's like, they're incredibly loud, Dan. So, I think it is a factor and I think we, we put them there in Lyons Park. On paper, it makes a ton of sense. And then I think that we're going to have the surrounding neighbors that are going to be like, why did you do this? Um, so I...
But have we asked the people around?
We haven't yet asked the people around the Lyons, I mean, the Valentine Peak.
Yeah.
You're going to be near some backyards.
And that is a harder, I mean, it really is a harder consideration because in talking to other city councils in other parts of the state, the cost per court, I think we could get to a much more reasonable number. But I do think the, the space that we have to work with is a consideration, just a buffer. Having enough of a buffer that we don't have issues or complaints. But buffers can be done a lot of different ways.
So let me just, let me just throw out a, a theoretical scenario, right? Just so you can kind of map this out in your head. $62,500, let's, maybe we could get a better, better price on engineering. That, that slapped me right in the face. Um, maybe that's what it costs nowadays. I don't know. Maybe we could, maybe we could actually put that in with the contractor and we could get it done cheaper. Um, maybe we could have somebody that wanted to donate the, um, the engineering as long as it's, you know... We don't want to build these courts and the next thing you know, they're cracking and then they're useless and now we're frustrated, right? We want them engineered, designed right, but maybe we could get that done cheaper. Um, let's assume a cost per court, just for this scenario. Um, I don't think there's any way we get these things built at $50,000 per court. I don't think that's even feasible. Um, I think we can do it for less than $115,000, what Cedar paid. First of, but one of the reasons I feel comfortable in that assumption is, is they put some amenities in that we probably wouldn't have to put in. Um, but, so is that number 100? Is it 75? Let's just say for the, for this mental exercise, it's $75,000 a court. Um, if we have $200,000 to work with, $75,000 a court, two courts puts us at $150,000. Um, three courts puts us at $225,000. Three courts, that's the magic number because you have three courts there and three courts inside the fairgrounds. You now have this six courts, you know. So if we wanted to shoot for something we could do right now theoretically, $225,000 plus the engineering, that may put us up around $275,000. You know, we have $200,000. Could we, could we get there with the use of some other funds? Whether it be grant funds, whether we kick in some general funds, whether we go after some park impact fees that we could throw at it. Um, that's not like totally outside of the realm of possible. Um, generally, I think, as I was looking at the design of these things personally, this is my personal opinion, you want to build them in, in either twos or fours because you, you can put two pickleball courts side to side. You would generally want a buffer on the, on the edge of the pickleball courts so that people can watch, they can watch, right? How big that buffer is and whether that has to be concrete or not, you know. But, but I think that you generally want to put two courts together. All the design that I've seen online of, you look at these things, then you have a buffer, then, then you could put another two courts. So I think it makes sense to build these in twos or maybe fours. And then if you're going to phase it, you phase another four and then you phase another four. And I say it like that because in my mind, at this location, you're going to want to tier them based on the topography. Maybe you could put four courts, two and two, and then you'd have some steps to another flat area where you could have another two and two, like as a master plan in a phased approach, right? Does it make sense to, to try to do three? I mean, I guess you could and then if you get some money, add the fourth one. Um, but it makes more sense that you probably put a buffer on either side so that you could have that. I'm just kind of talking it through. How close are we to building something with the money we have today? Do we, do we, do we look at setting a goal, try to get some engineering cheaper than that? Setting a goal of four and then looking for grants and donations? I mean, that could be a, a path forward. Um, I don't know.
And was it a possibility to go after that type of money again when that opened up?
Yeah, so, so, and Julie brought that up.
Okay.
Yeah, so we got $200,000 and they, they said, you know, and next year you can certainly come and ask for more. Um, the problem is, this body, this grant body, the restaurant tax, generally wants to see some skin in the game. Not generally, they absolutely want to see skin in the game. That means match dollars. Um, our, our Lyons Park location had a fair amount of match that we were able to, in their words, creatively call match dollars on paper. But we're saying, hey, we already built the parking lot. We already built the restrooms. It was a part of this master plan. We just didn't build the courts. Give us credit for all the money we spent on this. And, um, plus the land, plus we could even have the city, um, Public Works do the grading. You know, we could do some of the work on this thing. Give us credit for that. If we go to a new location, I think we actually, our match argument gets weakened because now what are we giving? We're dedicating the land. They want to see dollars and cents. Um, and so, it makes it harder to go and say, now we want another $200,000. But by the way, we, we lost most of our match argument. I mean, I'll go and ask for it. I think they're probably going to say, what skin in the game does Parowan have? Or other match, it can be other entities that are matching. Like, one of the reasons we were really hoping for those two grants is, one of them, they were both $50,000 each. It would have been $100,000 of cash that we could have brought into this project. Didn't come from the general fund, so. Um, that, that, um, they do their hearings in the fall, I think like November if I remember correctly. Um, we can go and we can ask for more money. I would like to walk into that room with some real match arguments. Um, so, we, we'd probably want to get, um, creative in a hurry if we want to build them at this location.
Could we go back to, I mean, could we, I don't know, have a public hearing or something? Go back to the individuals and ask them, the residents of that area, telling them the situation.
Which area?
The Lyons Park. I know you send out the letters, but I mean, having an actual public hearing or something, telling them the pros and cons and giving them, you know, the explanation. But then also knowing that that park, we now know, is not part of the Mortenson deal.
Right.
The rest of it. And that might make a difference. Because they came, they said honor the Mortenson, you know, agreement. There was people that came here and said they didn't care. It was a handshake. We need to do that. And so, this is not part of the Mortenson property, the south of that, that pool.
I don't know if Matt wants to speak to the group that came to Economic Development and talked about kind of the benefit of having that space over there at Valentine Peak Sports Complex. Just, they felt like there was more space for expansion maybe in the future.
Yeah, that's what, you know, the parking and stuff like that, that was a better... My, I had to go back and look at emails, but I think a lot of the people that emailed us around that park did set the noise or they didn't want it there. I think that's what they're concerned and, and the parking. Um, you know, Valentine Peak would have, we could do that. We, you know, um, more room for to expand, um, easier, but it's going to cost us a little more, yes. So, but the group did, they want to push forward too. Let's find this place. So, it's a good solution.
You can come up.
I think when we look at that Valentine's Peak too, we need to, uh, realize that the city, or no, the city, the county has made another access. They call it Old Paragona Road and it is a road and it loops around on the west side of the, uh, the, oh, soccer field. And so we, we can utilize that area up on that south end more than just shoving everything on 200 North. And the reason I say that, you need to diversify your traffic and get that traffic to flow. And there, there are those roads and there is that area that needs to be cleaned up and developed. And there is that access that we keep, we forget, we look at this map and oh, and that wasn't there. You know, it was just 200. But now, there is, and the county's using that to gain access to the, uh, fair now. They're, they're directing them, putting signage and so forth. They bring them in on 200 and bring them up on the west side of the soccer field. That, that road's been a little bit improved with some milled material. And so it is, you know, I'm just saying, we need to look at the whole, you know, area there.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, one of my questions is, a, a group of us did go door to door around Lyons Park when that first came up. And I think Rochelle was on a different, doing the same type thing with the letters. And they specifically did not want pickleball courts due to the noise, the traffic, and the list went on. Their, their heartfelt compassion for the Mortensons was, they wanted the city to stand tall for that. Okay, so that's that part. My question is, we keep slamming or putting down or finding excuses for the Valentine Peak property that we own. There is parking there. In the beginning, we could share the bathrooms. There's not festivities going on all the time in sequence. But if we're not going to do that, then what are you, as a city council, going to do with that land? We can't just keep saying, oh, it takes too much work. Can we start working on it now? Can we start clearing it off, clearing all those piles of junk? And, you know, getting it to a place to where maybe next year, Julie gave a great presentation for that pickleball. And that's where the club or their association of many members want it to be. So what can you do? If you're, if you're not, let's sell that piece of property. Let's sell that land and use the money for what we need. Just saying. Thank you.
Mayor, when people come up, would you ask them to identify themselves, please?
Sure.
For the record.
Cindy Stanfield, 30-year resident, Parowan, Utah.
Well, and I felt like she, maybe she felt like her presentation wasn't appreciated, but it was appreciated and I'm not, I don't think any of the council is slamming that location. I think it's definitely what we're moving toward and why it's on the agenda tonight.
And I think we're trying, we have $200,000 and we are trying to utilize that $200,000 to the best of our ability.
And right when you're looking at spending $60,000 on engineering, that's a big buy-in.
It's just a big chunk out of it. I don't, I think we all want to build them. We all don't want not to build them. We just need to figure out a way, the best way to spend that $200,000 because the courts aren't cheap and so we're just, yeah.
Did Maria feel, what was her feelings towards getting money next year?
Well, he just said...
I know, but did she indicate, I mean, really?
She didn't. I, I brought it up and she did not say a word. She really is supportive of pickleball. She has a board that needs to make a recommendation. The board, the board, I thought grilled us a, a little bit more than if it was just Maria's decision. Um, and to speak to Julie White's comment and to correct if there is any rumors out there, the overlap between us and Cedar and money, there wasn't a, it wasn't a limited amount of money and we got it or they got it. It was the, the timing that we were asking for courts and they were asking for money for courts. They actually came with bids and said, here is what we want to do. The low bid was $900,000 and something dollars and change. It was close to a million. Seems like it was closer to a million than it was to $900,000. I don't remember. But, um, they had the balance in cash. They were asking for... But, um, they had the balance in cash. They were asking for 200,000 dollars. The balance that they had in cash came from rap tax board, impact fees from a large city that collects a lot of park impact fees, and I think one other source. So Cedar City approached the, the board with a proposal that they get 200,000 dollars and they come up with a 700,000 dollars and something in cash. The same day that we come and say, we wanna do it, we have an estimate of 392,000, will you, will you pay the whole thing? We've already spent a bunch of money on the rest of it. And they looked at it and said, well, we're giving Cedar City 200,000 dollars and they're coming up with a difference in cash. Let's give Parawan 200,000 dollars. We'd like to see at least 50% match. And they have roughly 400,000 dollars on the bid. They didn't believe our bid was very accurate because they're looking at a 900,000 dollar bid from the county. In fact, they kinda beat me up on it. So they're like, how could that possibly be the case? And I'm like, because we're putting it in a park, we've already spent all this money on it. That's what I'm trying to tell you. So they says, well, we'll award you 200 and we'll award them 200, and that's how we walked away with it. So they didn't get part of our money, they just, it just, I think it was, um, serendipity in a bad way that, that they were comparing us to Cedar City's, um, stuff. If, if Cedar City hadn't have been there, they would've looked at it maybe differently and they would've given us more. I don't know and I, we can't, we will never know. But as we come back and ask for more, we just need to make sure that we have a really good argument of, of a match or pure desperation or something. Um, but I'm, I'm willing to do whatever you wanna do. I don't, I don't know.
Yes.
Larry Zajak, Parawan resident. I've had a, a little bit of experience in, in building a couple pickleball courts. And my observation was this, and I'm directly addressing the engineering costs. So a pickleball contractor was hired that specializes in building pickleball courts. The cost admittedly about sixty-two or sixty-five thousand dollars per court. And that was probably five years ago, we'll say, so costs have probably gone up. But here's my observation. There weren't, there was no engineering involved. This contractor builds pickleball courts, they know what they're doing. They come in, they set the grade, they know how much slope to put on it so water will run off, and they just do it. They are good at what they do. Now, if you take an approach that you wanna have something engineered so that somebody can come in and lay the rebar and somebody else can come in and do the concrete and somebody else will build the fence and somebody else will do this and that, you're gonna end up at a much higher spot. But you, you, I recommend that the city consider looking for somebody that specializes in pickleball courts, not somebody that can build a pickleball court.
So in other words, let me see if I understand what you're saying. Rather than, rather than bid this out to general contractors and take this, general contractors, a set of plans that we paid for, bid this out directly to pickleball court builders and say, you give us a bid or get bids to do that.
Something close, very close to that. I mean, on the property that this was done on, we measured it off. We said, here's where we want this corner, here's where we want that corner, here's the other corners, go from there. Here's the size of the courts, and they said, okay, get out of the way. They bring in a, the guy that does the concrete, does his own grading.
Yeah.
And, I mean, they.
They probably have subcontractors. In fact, I'm sure they probably.
Well, the pickleball guy does court stuff and.
I mean, pool guys are kinda the same one.
Yeah, and the concrete guy is the concrete guy, but that is the only concrete guy this contractor will use. He will not let you say, oh, I'm gonna use this other guy's, come in and do the concrete. Cause they trust each other, they have a working relationship. So anyway, I'm just suggesting that, you know, look for something like that and, and there might not be any engineering cost. You might have to have some kind of a on paper site plan or something for these guys and tell them what you expect in regard to grading, if there's some special requirements. But they're gonna come in and they're gonna do that.
So I also wanna go back a few statements. You said approximately five years ago, it was approximately sixty-some-odd thousand, sixty-two per court.
Lights and everything.
Lights and everything. Um, if we look at, and I'm not, this is not like trying to paint what you said or color it or say good or bad. I'm just thinking costs for most building have probably close to doubled. But maybe even if it didn't double, I mean, eighty, ninety thousand, hundred thousand dollars per court for a guy like that, maybe?
Yeah, I don't think so. So we talked to this same contractor when the city started going down this path about pickleball courts maybe a couple of years ago, and the costs were not doubled. And, and I'm, I'm not gonna state a number cause I don't wanna get in that space, but.
Okay, and I don't want space. Um, the other question is, a lot of times when it, when it's for a city, they add a premium cause they gotta deal with the city versus a residence, um.
And I don't know if that's necessary or if that's just, anyway, Kim's behind you raising his hand. Let him share the podium.
I'll introduce Kim as our resident pool guy. These two guys standing here have hours on that pool. I gotta say that. It has nothing to do with pickleball, but they will always have our appreciation.
I couldn't keep up with Larry. He outdid me by far. Kim, um, just to help on cost, my, I put my court in a year ago. It has lights, it has a basketball hoop, which is three grand, has a sports court, which is pretty expensive. My court cost forty thousand dollars a year ago.
Post-tensioned concrete?
No, but it is.
Okay.
Mine was the same.
Yours was the same?
The courts I'm talking about, they were not post-tensioned, but there was three bars in those.
Go on, share that.
So, and you know, that's one thing that we haven't talked about is we could go with a cheap, cheaper. That is a.
Less expensive.
A less expensive, I guess I would say, value engineered instead of post-tensioned, which is kind of, which is defined as, as the, um, the premium option. You could go with something less than that. You, you may, we, we may deal with maybe cracking settling, whereas at post-tension, we wouldn't. Um, but that's an option.
We have another person coming up, Dell Tanner Jr. is gonna share what he knows. And that's kind of, I mean, I was hopeful and I don't know.
I'm glad Dell Tanner is, is stepping up.
A feeling.
Cause I did not wanna use your name, but Dell is one of the guys that said, Dan, you can get post-tensioned concrete cheaper than what you're getting these, when what we're seeing Cedar City get these bids at. You wanna characterize that? I didn't wanna throw your name out there.
Yeah, no, no, I, I appreciate it. I didn't even know that you guys were gonna be talking about this tonight. I just, uh, so Dell Tanner Jr. here and that has also built courts. Um, and as I'm, as I'm listening to all this, there's, there's several things that I, I think would be valuable, uh, for everybody to hear. I agree with Larry, it can, this can be done a lot cheaper, um, than, uh, than the costs that have been thrown out there. And I also agree with you, Dan, that there, there does seem to be a, you know, sort of municipality tax when, uh, when, when people submit bids. Um, the engineering costs, I, again, I, I wanna agree with Larry. It, the, first of all, most, most engineers around here don't even know how to engineer something like this. I, I, I tried, I wanted to, and, and I, and I asked around and the reality is, most of the firms, they, they don't really know what they're doing. And, and if they don't know what they're doing, my guess is that they're probably gonna charge a lot because they, they gotta go figure it out. I don't know if it's a possibility, if we do have to engineer it and we go someplace and, and get an engineering firm where they do a lot of this work and this is something that they can do in their sleep and maybe do it cheaper. Um, but, you know, again, agree with Larry on, uh, on that cost. Now, I know there's a lot of conversations about post-tension, not post-tension. Um, I don't really have any skin in the game. I already have a pickleball court at my house. So I, I don't, I don't, I mean, I don't really care. I'm here to offer my opinion, my experience. Um, uh, one thing that I, I think needs to be considered is, if you, if you do a, uh, i- i- if you do a sport court surface, my understanding, I, I don't, I don't, I don't think that we're gonna be able to have tournaments on a, on a sport court surface. I, I don't, I don't think you can even, I don't even think that you, you can. I know a lot of people do sport court surfaces. When you do a sport court surface, you don't, the, the, the concrete's not as critical. Um, do you need to do post-tension? I did, but that doesn't mean you have to. Um, so I, I think it can definitely be done, be done a lot cheaper. Um, I think the estimate that you got was from Stilson, which, that's all they do, is build, is build these courts. I don't know if you ended up getting any other, um, estimates from anybody else, but Stilson, uh, court, courts, that's, that's all they do, they build.
Dell's talking about the 392,000 dollar estimate that we used to go after the grant. That was by Stilson.
Yeah.
And that was for six courts. Right?
Right. Now, Stilson only, Stilson subs out their concrete and I originally had Stilson give, get me a quote to do the concrete at my place. He does have a guy that will do post-tension, which I wanted. His guy was still twice as much as what I paid to have post-tensioned done. Um, so it is possible to have post-tensioned concrete done here much cheaper than I think everybody else. Again, if that's the, the direction that everybody wants to go. I had to bring the steel guys up from Las Vegas, but it took them three hours. They drove up on a Saturday morning, table in, they went home. They came back, you know, two weeks later, they tensioned it. It took them two hours. It, it, it wasn't that big of a deal. But again, um, there are, there are cheaper ways to get it done. Um, I don't know if anyone.
Would those guys do that for us? That's the big question in my mind, at, at a similar price.
Sure. So again, and I don't, I don't wanna necessarily turn this into a post-tension versus a not post-tension conversation. I don't care. Um, I, I did go with post-tension. Every, I looked for contractors from St. George to, to Ogden. I, I could only find two people in the whole state of Utah that would even come to Parawan to do post-tension. One of them was Stilson's guy and the other was, was the guy that I used, which was, um, uh, Southern Utah paving. And so it's a local, local guy here, Parawan guy, by the way. Um, and he had a, he had a, just the steel crew that he brought up, so I, I didn't have to do anything with it. He, he, he's the one who, and he's the one who, when I told him what I was doing, he said, well, you're, you're gonna do post-tension, right? There's the, this is the only way to do this. And I said, you're the only contractor that I've even talked to that's tensioned is, around here. So, um, th- there's not a lot of people that even do it or that will come here to do it. Um, but we have a local, we have a local person here that's in that business. And, uh, whether we do post-tension or not, uh, and he's, he's indicated, uh, you know, an interest in, you know, helping out, uh, helping to, you know, to defray some of the costs and, uh, so I, I just, I, 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 I think that there definitely is a cheaper way to get it done. And I, I'm, I'm happy to, uh, offer any, um, advi- advice or contacts or, or any expertise that, um, you know, that, that anybody, uh, thinks would be valuable to help, help in that process. Again, I don't have any skin in the game. Doesn't matter to me. Um, you know, we, I, we get people that come over and play at our place all the time and it's great. Um, but I'd love to see pickleball courts built here. Um, everything that Julie said about, you know, the demand, uh, it's, it is, it's there. Um, so anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dell. Were we required to have engineering and things? I mean, we've kinda been let down these roads before and incurred a lot of expense unnecessarily. And I think maybe if we try to get some people to help, like Dell was saying, there's a local person, maybe we should try and solicit some local help and try and do these things ourselves, so to speak. I don't know that we have to have the, the engineering things.
What we, what we, what we need is, I feel like on a contract like, I mean, on a project like this, um, going an engineered route, going to get, getting a general, turning over the plans, getting it bid out. Like, to spend money, we need to get it bid out. To bid it out, you either need a set of plans or you need to bid it, you need to have a one-size-fits-all, I mean, not one-size-fits-all, a, firms that just will do the whole thing for us. They will bid it built, right? Um, this is not like building a building where you're, you're gonna, you're gonna use a very specific approach. This is literally, we could go to, as Larry suggested, pickleball builders. What I don't wanna do is get into a space where the city is just trying to figure it out. We're, we're doing some grading, we're hiring a cement guy, and the cement guy's like, what do you want me to do? And we're, we're acting as the general contractor. What we did with the pool, um, worked because we already had the pool there. Um, and all we were doing, essentially when we started, was basically tweaking the landscaping. We were taking out the deck and putting a new deck back in. Um, we had a lot of, um, design work that was donated. And, and frankly, we were out in front of the plans on that, and then all of a sudden, we start talking about modifying the building. Then we got into some space that was some real gray area. We needed to go get a building permit and we did. And we needed a general on that. We didn't have a general. And so we were basically acting as the general and hiring contractors to do bits and pieces. And I think in, um, the opening, in, in the opening comments, we're not done with that yet. There's still a lot of work that's gotta be done and, I, I mean, I was out there, I got sawdust, uh, literally on my shirt right now. I was out there this afternoon, still working on it. Um, I don't wanna do that haphazardly on a brand-new construction process that then fails because it, it wasn't done properly. And then now we've wasted all this money, five years later, we have cracked, you know, we have these courts that look like crap and they're, got weeds growing through them and they're settled and, you know, I, I just wanna make sure that we build something right and we build that it'll last for a long time and that our maintenance costs will be low because they were built well. I think we've heard of some really good ideas, um.
What does the grant require? Do they require that you have certain plans, certain standards, certain whatever?
Th- no, they don't require that. They require that, that we, that we, they gave us a hundred thousand dollars. When we, on completion, we can apply for the, the rest of the money. Um, if we don't build them, we'll give them the hundred thousand dollars back at the point it expires. It's not gonna expire this year, it would expire at the end of next year if we file an extension. Um, they wanna see the money gets well-spent and then they get the result. That's what we asked for, right? So we're, we've, we already probably need to go back to them and say, we need to amend the grant cause we're going in a different location. And, um, we did apply for a grant for Lions Park to do that specific project.
Janelle's gonna come up.
Because we use those amenities as part of.
As part of the match.
Yeah.
Like, we're messing with the fundamental, um, things in the grant that we asked for. So I think the county is gonna work with us. I think if we came up with a plan that worked and we could build some courts and we could hold some tournaments, the county's gonna be happy. They want us to see that we build some courts. Um, I think that they would probably be disappointed if we built some courts and then they, they look bad in five years and they're gonna say, Parawan really doesn't know what they're doing, so.
Yes.
My name's Janelle Zajak. I'm a resident of Parawan and I'm in the pickleball club. Uh, so my question is, why is Parawan City not ponying up a dime or talking about ponying up a dime for this? I mean, it seems like many of the projects that we do, Parawan City has no money and all we do is seek grant money or seek gift money from somewhere else. So where's the money gonna come from, from the city of Parawan to help move this forward? And I guess you don't have to answer this, cause this is not a public meeting, but I just want y'all to think about that.
You mean not a public hearing?
Right.
Um, yeah, I mean, we've, we've, from the start, we've looked at this from a, um, um, kind of a, this was a, this was a, a, going after a grant. The match dollars were, were just that, not cash, but match. I mean, there's cash match and then there's in-kind match, all of it, that's what was proposed. That's what we decided we were gonna look for. So if we were to, you know, look at throwing, um, additional money in the game, where would it come from? Um, the parks are part of the general fund, so it would have to be a general fund consideration. Um, I, I said earlier in the night that, you know, we could spend park impact fees on a new park, on, on something like pickleball courts. I don't think there's a soul around that would say that that's an inappropriate use of impact fee money. Um, after the hundred and fifty thousand dollars going towards the, the expansion of the pool, I asked Judy to give me a number and we do have, um, I asked Judy to give me a number and we do have, um, forty-nine thousand, three hundred twenty-five dollars and seventy-seven cents in park impact fees. That would be a consideration of the council if that would be the best use of that or not. But we could use park impact fees or you could use general fund money and, and put it into a, um, capital project fund from, because parks are in the general fund. General fund is, is our tightest fund. It's our fund that competes with public safety. It competes with everything that we do administrative, everything that isn't really utilities. Um, our airport is in the general fund. Everything is in there. So it's pretty tight, but there could be some general fund money allocated. Um, I, I, I get, I would get too hesitant to putting some serious money from the general fund to the tunes of, of hundreds of thousands of dollars. You know, that would empty our fund balance, not a good practice. If you wanted to spend any kind of serious general fund money, you're looking at bonding and, and debt and a payment because we would not want to empty our cash reserves of general fund money. So, and-
And I wanted to kinda step in with RAP tax.
So RAP-
So anytime I'd been on calls about improvements to parks, match money coming in is usually from RAP tax. And it really doesn't seem like a penny out of ten dollars would add up, but estimates on what our RAP tax would add up to be is, is fairly significant. And we would have a board that would determine where that money that was collected from RAP tax went. And my guess is the board would, would consider pickleball courts as something that, that RAP tax money could go to because it fits the definition of what the RAP tax is collected for. And one of the points, I, I didn't wanna overspeak Rochelle, but we pay RAP tax everywhere we go. We pay for those parks and things that we see and use. And pickleball in Cedar was RAP tax money in action. And so it's really important. And I know for several years that I've been interested as a, as a citizen, the council has said, "Yeah, we wanna do, collect RAP tax, but we're finally here now." And so that really would help so much. It's the segment or the vehicle of money that we need to do these things that we have never had. And it would really make a huge difference for what we could do. Because again, you know, we don't wanna be going in pleading. We wanna go in doing what we could do for ourselves. And very frequently, I've been told, "Well, Parowan doesn't even collect RAP tax." So basically, you're not even doing for yourself what you could do for yourself. You're coming and asking for money. And most of that money does come from tourism activity. It really does. And again, we pay it when we go to Cedar.
Or Saint George.
Or Beaver, Enterprise.
Provo.
From a, from a timing consideration, if, if you were to, to add RAP tax into this, into this puzzle, I'll call it a puzzle 'cause that's what it is right now. Um, if, RAP tax will go on the ballot-
Right.
Um, and, and if it passes-
It doesn't even start until January of-
It would start January of next year and it would start accumulating money, right? Um, you could, you could borrow against RAP tax. RAP tax could make a payment. We could go get ridiculously low interest rate to bond to build something and then you could build what you wanted and dedicate our, a portion of our RAP tax towards making that payment. Um, one interesting idea about that is that's the type of thing that you can go to and make a really good argument to a restaurant tax board that says, "We wanna build eight courts right now. We wanna build this nine hundred thousand dollar thing." I'm just, I'm not suggesting that. I'm just throwing that out there. "We want you to pay, pay half of that." That's four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And, and the county would say, "Fine, we'll pay that over three years." That's generally their approach to large projects like that. And we would say, "Okay, we'll go bond for the difference and we'll pony up our RAP tax to make that payment." That's a very normal way to structure deals like this that you could do. Um, but now we're talking about going into debt, but we're talking about dedicating a new revenue stream towards that payment. But now you're also talking about building something bigger. So these are just, these are just options.
Then you've got trails coming. Well, we want some of that RAP tax.
Yeah.
Or-
No, that's a good point.
You build a pickleball court, how about a basketball court for the kids?
Well, you-
So if you dedicate, if you dedicate it all to the pickleball, then the RAP tax doesn't do anything for the other equilibrium-
You can only spend RAP tax, every dollar you can only spend it once. And we've been exploring a lot of different things that we're gonna use this future RAP tax. That hasn't even, you know, we've talked about a rec program and going towards a rec director, but it's an option.
It's something that we can talk about. And I think that the key to this is we are figuring it out. And just even the presentation tonight, I, I hope it ends, you know, feeling on a positive note because the solutions that have come out of the room and again, things that have come to my attention, we could figure this out, but is it going to be, you know, something we can do before the snow falls? I, I don't know. It sounds, that sounds like a lofty goal. But I do know that even for two hundred, if we're creative, we might be able to get somewhere. I mean, we had another round of T-Mobile, I think T-Mobile opened again. Um, and I'll keep going at it and I welcome the community to come with grants that they find. Um, we, we have just as good of a chance as anybody. It's just like applying for scholarships for a high school student. They, every time you put in an application, you have a chance of, of being chosen. But there is gonna be a way to piece this together if it's something the community wants. And like we've said before, we'll build the courts we can afford. And I, I see this being very possible, but I know. And I, the reason is because we have a strong direction. And I think that's kinda the point of the presentation tonight is could we start moving toward a location? And I think that's, that we accomplished that discussion. So if there's no other discussion, we can move to the, um, item number seventeen, which is update on the bridge process.
Okay, um, so where we left off on the bridge process, we had a meeting, um, with the city council. Um, we were, we were to the point where we were gonna have to start spending money, um, like real money, um, on hiring an engineer to build the bridge that was previously voted to be on one hundred West. Um, we had a, there was a lot of information that we received since that vote. Um, specifically, um, one of the, the major things as a recap was a, a lot of money that's gonna have to be spent by the city, which will not be a part of that grant. Um, we're talking about upgrading intersections on either side, um, on Old Highway ninety-one and on two hundred. We're talking about upgrading one hundred West all the way through to, between the bridge and two hundred. Um, we're talking about taking out the old bridge and rerouting, including the utility conflicts, Main Street and three hundred. And then of course, on the other side, um, there's a lot of costs that we assumed that the grant would pay for or be involved in the grant that will not be. Um, the other major update that we have learned since that vote was taken is that if we can figure out how to work with the canal company on relocating the diversion, which is just downstream from the Main Street Park, it actually allows us to deal with, um, a lot of different slopes. We can actually lower the, the level of the water as it goes under the Main Street Bridge currently, which would open up some potentially cheaper design, bridge designs 'cause they wouldn't have to be so tall and so long impacting everybody around it. Um, so, uh, where we left off was I was gonna look into some options, um, to see what we could, not just me looking at some options, but I was gonna look into what it would take to have an engineering firm give us some, kind of a, in light of these new, um, facts, some, some advice. Uh, had a call with Jones and DeMille. Jones and DeMille is the one that did the original, um, uh, feasibility, um, study on the bridge locations that we, that the coun- council voted on. Um, I wanna quote the engineer that was on the phone. Right, kind of talked about all the stuff that we've, we've learned and specifically about dropping the elevation of the water, the flow line of the water down deeper, opening up some different designs. He said, "That is a game changer." That's his exact words. He said, "That really may open up," like we, all of the assumptions that they used in looking at it, what was looked at, which is what we went after the grant based on, he said, "That is definitely a game changer. If you could move that diversion, you could lower the line." And he said, "We, we'd have to look at it and see, but just as a knee jerk from an engineering standpoint, that would be a game changer to consider some other options." Um, we also discussed six hundred West. Um, I don't believe, I know that they didn't do a look at six hundred West because they said that they didn't. Um, they were, um, encouraged to stay in that general location mainly because, so that they didn't move traffic too far from that location. So they said, "No, they hadn't really looked at six hundred West." So, um, I said, "Well, what would it take, um, before we start spending serious dollars with, um, the UDOT process and the UDOT engineer?" Um, 'cause it, 'cause I mean, he, he, he told me, he said, "Listen, part of that process is, is, is they will, um, they'll design three different bridges for you. That's part of their mandate on these joint highways projects for UDOT. They'll design three bridges at that location, three different designs." Um, however, the grant is for one hundred West. We could, we could amend the grant, have it moved to a different location, um, but we would have to do that, whether it be leaving it at Main Street where it currently is or moving to six hundred. Um, we would have to update the grant, say we wanna move the location of the bridge, right? If we wanna do that. And so I said, "The problem is, is to go and update, to go to the, to go to, back to the grant and say, 'We wanna look at that,'" you know, "It'd be helpful if we had some idea, some reasons, some, something that we had looked at." And, um, certainly if there's some really, some options that we didn't consider before, which could make a potentially a much cheaper bridge, and I'm talking at Main Street. And the reason I'm saying at Main Street is because anytime you move the bridge is when we start getting very expensive on all the costs that the grant won't pay for. That's the same for one hundred, three hundred, six hundred. If we move that bridge, we're gonna have to put in all these other costs, all these other, um, improvements on our dime. And still, we have to take out the Main Street Bridge on our dime and rebuild both intersections on either side of the current Main Street Bridge on our dime with utility conflicts. That's the case no matter what. So, um, anyways, so I asked them, I said, "What would, what would it take? What would you, what would you suggest we do? What would your scope of work be and your deliverables?" This is what they said. They proposed scope of work to do that, to actually give us some information. This is what they said that they would do and their deliverables and the fees. Um, Engineering Studies Services, the proposed scope of work is as follows. This is just one engineer. We could go to others, of course, but these guys have already done most of the work. Utilize existing survey data and cons- and construct site visit to visually evaluate significant changes, if any, to the Parowan Creek channel since the survey dated was collected. That's just talking about the topography of the channel. Basically, the only thing that's really changed is we've actually cleaned out under the bridge, preparing for flood stuff. Evaluate the required bridge span for a new bridge over Parowan Creek that will accommodate the required design flows at up to three locations. To pay these loca- Inclusions. So basically, okay, up one hundred and six hundred. Determine the impacts of the increased to nearby utilities and evaluate feasible utility relocation alternatives and estimated costs. Work with city officials to determine impacts to the intersection adjacent to the bridge. Preliminary geometric alignment exhibits. This they've already done, but they're including it in the scope of work. Realignments that are likely to be necessitated by, necessitated by a longer bridge. Prepare opinions of probable cost for each location. Present proposed project, including exhibits and probable cost to the city council, including the following deliverables. Exhibits of feasible layout options for each location evaluated. Report summarizing advantages of each location. Jones and DeMille Engineering's recommendation for the preferred location, the cost for each location, transportation system and master plan implications and hydraulic analysis assumptions and findings in PowerPoint presentation. These are their assumptions. It is anticipated a topographical study, survey required to complete this study is therefore not included in the scope of work. UDOT standards and requirements will be considered in evaluation, in evaluating the structure type and feasibility of each location. And finally, the final construction drawings, details and specifications will not be provided as a part of this study. Otherwise, the cost would skyrocket, right? Engineering exhibits prepared are to be preliminary in nature and not intended for construction. Nineteen thousand, nine hundred dollars. So, this, this, this feels like pickleball two point oh. Where do you, what do we wanna do? Um, obviously, the, the stakes are much higher if nothing, if for no other reason than this is infrastructure that is mandatory, that is, that affects everybody in Parowan. Um, it affects property owners in a big way that are nearby. And the amount of money we're talking about spending, um, the current, currently, the current thing is north of five million just for the grant. I'm gonna guess that that goes up to a lot more. And that's not me guessing, that's the saying that costs have gone up since we very first bid that with that design at one hundred West. And that does not include all of the costs that I've just described that would be on the city, which I'm gonna guess is north of a million bucks. By the time you have to upgrade two full intersections, rebuild a road to, to a wider and a thicker standard, take out a bridge and redesign two intersections on either side of the bridge with the utility conflicts. I'm guessing the prices are gonna go in the, you know, quite high if we move it to one hundred West. If we, if we leave it at Main Street, you're still talking about spending millions of dollars. It's gotta be up to UDOT standard. Um, if you're able to relocate the, um, the canal, I mean, the, uh, diversion, um, you're talking about piping and installation of that. Um, I still think that it's worth pursuing 'cause I think we bring the cost way down. I think you bring the size of the bridge down where it doesn't have to be so high. It doesn't have to be so long. And, um, I think we would be doing ourselves a disservice if we did not. The question is, is do you wanna spend nineteen thousand, nine hundred dollars to know that that is a really possible option? Or do you want to basically go back to the grant and say, based on discussions we've had, we don't have any actual engineering, but we wanna, we wanna move the location, um, without having, actually knowing any of this information other than the information that I presented? Um, and keep in mind, there are, there are, um, you know, impacts to property owners that are not minimal. Um, I just received a, um, just yesterday, um, and I, I scanned it, um, gave a copy to Cali and will certainly email it to you, a petition from a lot of property owners. Um, I haven't counted them, but it, it was around fifty that I'll share with you and we'll definitely make it, um, available to the public. Um, I'm, I, I wondered if they would show up tonight and wanna make sure that that was well represented, that have asked the city to not move the bridge. Um, and it's fifty citizens that signed their name to it and I'll, I'll share that with you as well. Um, this is a difficult decision. You're gonna have people that feel strongly about not moving it, people that feel strongly about moving it. To any location we move it to, it's gonna have impacts. So it's, it's a weighty matter. And I know spending nineteen thousand dollars is also a lot of money. Um, my thought was it's in the budget because we have it there to spend as we move forward with this project. Part of our match dollars is we spend them moving forward. So we do have money in the budget. We would have to then, if we move forward with the exact grant that is written, which we know is gonna be modified, we're gonna have to allocate an additional, you know, dollars. You know, if we spent some of this money that's in the budget that's allocated towards the match, towards this nineteen thousand dollars, we would theoretically have to replace it. And I'm saying the numbers are gonna change on the back end regardless. So what do you want, what do you wanna do? It is in the budget. We could go ahead and, and do it. I just did not want to do that without talking to the council and making sure you guys were comfortable with spending that, um, money, um, regardless of the fact it's in the budget and regardless of the fact that you told me, "Yeah, let's go ahead and look at an engineer and see what opinions they have." I just didn't wanna spend nineteen thousand dollars without bringing it to you first. So I don't know, questions, thoughts?
Well, the trouble we had with the state even approving our, to move us up on the list, you know, and problems that, that we had. If in fact, we could lower the cost, 'cause those of us that were on here, when they came and said that- when they came and said, that bridge has got to go. There's no way in the world that bridge will suffice for, if, if the freeway's closed, you know? And so that's-
And it has been downgraded by UDOT to not allow a certain tonnage. You technically can't drive a full-size fire truck across-
Across it, yeah.
According to the tonnage that is allowed, let alone sixteen-wheelers, ten-wheelers with weight.
Exactly, so-
It's not just an opinion, that's my point.
No, no, that's exactly right. So the bridge had to, we've got to fix the bridge. And in looking at it, that first plan, remember, it came clear up by heaps of spring in order to get the, the direction-
To two and ninety and go straight across.
Yeah.
Right.
You know, so they had to take all that property that, in fact, the Heritage Park would be impacted.
I think it would have just affected two parcels. The, the, um, where the heap springs is and their, and a, and a residence. I mean, you're talking eminent domain affecting two property owners. And yeah, the entrance to, to the park, the Heritage Park would have to be modified.
So, what's, what's going to be the cheapest for us? And do the best job possible? Is it six hundred?
I, I think that six hundred provides some very, um, how many is a funny word? Tantalizing, um, bridge options because we have-
So-
It's already a corridor. The road itself is not wide and thick, like it would have to be upgraded to be, but it's on our central, it's on our master plan as a corridor. It literally doesn't have the encroachment of buildings and all of that stuff. The intersection with Main Street or two hundred south is in a commercial area where you don't have these really tight constraints. And, um, and more importantly, from a bridge designing standpoint, and I'm not a bridge engineer, but I have talked to bridge engineers about this exact thing. You have, you have better approach angles, you have all kinds of options with the slope. You could design a lot of different bridges, including hopefully cheaper options there. But you still have to do all these other things that I've described on our dime.
But you're going to have to do that no matter where the bridge goes.
Unless you leave it at Main Street.
Well, but you-
Because in Main Street, you don't have any extra work to be done that the grant won't pay for.
So the grant will pay for the, the exit, or the, the entrance to the bridge and the exit?
Yeah, and all the utility relocation.
So it's only, it's only three, it's only, uh, three hundred and six hundred that they won't pay for the intersection rebuild?
Right. They will, they will pay for the bridge and literally getting onto the bridge. They won't pay for intersections and upgrades outside of that. Including demolishing the bridge, they will pay for if it's at Main Street. But they won't pay for demolishing the bridge if we go a new location. That's ours. That's why the costs start to go up for us.
Okay, at Main Street, we haven't been talking about lowering the channel because that'll change the configuration-
Right.
Of that bridge, and so, and then-
And we would have to do the, I'm, I'm almost positive in asking the engineer that was hired, like, that is a definite consideration, but that would be on our dime to relocate the, the diversion.
Right, but I think you could incorporate the canal company, the, you know, the, the stream holders in that, in the fact that that could be incorporated with the recharge plan up at the breakwater.
Yeah, well, we're talking about that anyways. What we don't have money to do, but by the way, I got a big announcement in my update. I might have found some money to then maybe even pay for pipe to, if we move the diversion and then you pipe their water all the way down in and tie it in. I might have found a grant, I have found a grant.
Whose pipe is up there now?
There's no pipe.
No pipe? No, there's, there's stacks of, of-
Oh, that pipe. That's a, that's a Brianhead sewer project we allowed them to put, to, to stage it there for, for a few weeks. So, um, we have budgeted this year and we have assembled all this different grant money and all these things, and it's part of our, in our budget to do a, to do a diversion up, up above the breakwater. And, um, the diversion would, would take the canal company's water around the breakwater, which is already happening, and then it just goes back in the same, um, storm channel and it comes down to their diversion, right? All we're going to do with this, right now, as, as we're talking about, is take the recharge water, make, move their point of diversion as far as their water rights up to that point, and then anything that makes it past their diversion, we could, we could capture as recharge. The pumpers have a water right. Um, we would then put in pipe and put it down around to take it to the three hundred east. That's the plan.
Right.
Um, there is a grant right now, and it closes on the thirty-first. I'm going to have to really, really get on it if we want to apply. And it's, uh, it's through the Governor's Office of Economic Development, specifically for water infrastructure projects. The magic of this is that we've already assembled all of these different cash things towards it. So we could ask them for an incremental amount more, and we could actually use that to put in, this is what, this is my, what's been brainstorming and what I was going to talk about in my report. We could potentially put their water in a pipe at that point. You would have to build a new sluice box, which is the sediment settling debris basin that they have down here. Which, by the way, they don't love.
No.
It doesn't work great. Um, you'd have to build one of those, a new one of those. Hopefully, they would help participate financially to some degree. Um, I don't know if they would or not, we would ask them. But then put it in a pipe from that point and just tie it into where their pipe is there. You could then take out their structure, um, and notice how we're doing this with some additional grant money, hopefully. Um, and then the bridge project could go forward with new design options at Main Street. The, the grant would pay for the entire thing. Of course, we have our match stuff, but if, but if we can get a, we can get a cheaper bridge, it's not, I mean, a cheaper bridge also means a less tall and long bridge, which is one of the reasons, I believe, that, that there were those that were opposed to the Main Street bridge being rebuilt in this new location because it, you're going to put in this big massive bridge, right? So if you could go deeper and more of a, you know, of a, a different configuration because you can go deeper, maybe we wouldn't have to have such an impactful bridge that is going to, that we, none of us want, right?
Right.
So I don't know. But this is all based on, um, ideas and talking to some engineers, saying, yeah, you should look at that.
Yeah, I think we should.
Yeah. Can you, because that, that nineteen thousand dollars, that is for three sites, correct?
Yeah, uh, yep.
Can you just do the one on Main Street?
I can ask him, yeah.
And have it less?
And have it less.
Yeah, I mean, it would be less if we did only one site.
But the thing is, this is already in the budget. This is not taken-
Yeah, this is budgeted.
This is budgeted.
This is taking money that we have allocated as match dollars towards this project and spending it on some engineering on the front end, hoping that we're saving-
Money in the-
A lot of money on the back end. So yeah, it's in the budget. I just didn't feel comfortable moving forward with it without bringing it to you and talking to you about it. So, I mean, it doesn't have to be in it, I mean, I mean, it, it is technically, Judy, pop quiz, nineteen thousand nine hundred dollars. Of course, maybe it comes under the threshold. There's a certain amount of money that the city manager can spend that's in the budget without, without bringing it to you guys.
No, it's twenty-five hundred. Are you sure?
Yep, yep.
Are you sure it's not twenty-five hundred?
I'm going to quote it right from the thing because I just looked it up for a different reason. Purchasing thresholds, this is, city manager shall be responsible for the yada, yada, yada. City manager shall have authority to authorize purchase orders for the expenditure city funds in an amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars without approval from the mayor. If the city manager and the mayor approves, then it, then it's not to exceed twenty-five thousand. So, um, yeah, we, and it is in the budget, so we could, you know, but I, but if you guys, but I don't want to say, let's only go to one location because it is, because it is, um, energized, the public is energized about it. I don't want to just say, let's just go to one location without discussing with you guys. But I bet we get the price, I would, I would insist on the price coming down if they're only going to look at one location.
No, I would think.
But it's going to cost us more money if we do another location on six hundred. It's still going to cost us a lot of money to-
Yeah.
-to tear that bridge down, or whatever we got to do and, and stuff around it.
And when you think about-
The thing is, is, is their initial thought was, that was one of the reasons that we looked at those others because of, by the time that you took out that bridge, straightened it out, bought the property that you'd have to have to make the entrance and do that. That's why we started looking at other places.
Yeah, the fact, the facts that we're basing this decision on are literally different than what the original decision said.
Because it was a higher ridge, yeah.
We didn't know that the grant wasn't going to pay for a lot of this other stuff.
But I think, I think we could, we go after it and we see what we can do at Main Street.
Right, and I like the, I, I really like that idea. Seeing if maybe we can change the diversion.
Yeah.
I mean-
If we could, if we could do the diversion and that pipe to the recharge at the same time. Well, we're doing that to the recharge no matter what. Well, no, I understand.
But we're just not changing the diversion no matter what. Yeah, I mean, so I've been looking at this from the perspective of if the city had to pay, let's say that the canal company didn't want to participate at all financially. And if the city had to pay to move it, maybe we wouldn't move it all the way up there because pipe is expensive, right? Maybe you just move it up to one hundred east, whatever, just an idea. You know, would it be worth it for us to spend the money to do that? If it drastically decreases the cost of the bridge?
Well, yeah.
I think we would be willing to do that, right?
We have.
Absolutely.
Even better if we could get a grant from the state towards this other project and do it.
Right.
The advantage to the canal company about moving the diversion is the more distance that you have in a pipe is less water that you le, lose, and it's significant to seeping in the ground. The other advantage is they don't love their sluice box. That's why I think they'll be happy to work with us, um, in doing-
And there's other reasons, and I'll discuss them with you.
Okay. So, but, but the major advantage to us is that it opens up design options on our bridge that make this thing cheaper and far less, um, a, a bridge that we could probably live with versus a bridge that we're just going to go, come on.
Well, Dan, didn't you say that petition was to leave the bridge where it is?
They don't want it in a residential area.
They don't want it moved, isn't that what?
The bridge, the, the petition, and literally, I got a, I mean, this, I spent time, I talked with Jones and DeMille last week. I don't want anybody to think that this petition has affected my approach to this. I got this, um, yesterday, Kelly, was it yesterday? Yesterday, they asked if they could come in and meet with me, or actually, just was one person. It was the main person that had been behind, that had gone door to door and got everything. Said, can I meet with you? I want to bring you some petitions. And I said, sure. They came to me yesterday and, and gave, um, gave me these, and it was, they, they didn't want the bridge to move from Main Street to one hundred west. Specifically, they didn't want the bridge to move from Main Street to one hundred west.
Right.
Okay, but they, do they want the bridge to move?
They just don't want it in their residential area.
They don't want it to one hundred west, do they?
I don't want to, I don't want to incorrectly characterize what they said, but, so let me look it up and I'll share it, I'll share it, um, email it to you.
Because I was asked to sign that, and I was like, yeah, I probably shouldn't put my name on that.
Because you're on the-
Well, they didn't know I was on council, which is fine.
And, and I don't know, I don't know-
They don't want it in their residential area.
They don't want it in their areas, residential and all.
But, but, um, it's fifty people, and if we move it to one hundred west, it's going to affect probably, I don't know exactly how many, seven homes? I'm just saying it's bigger than just the, the actual neighborhood. And, and I guess that you'd have to consider, you know, what sort of radius you include in number of homes. But I'm saying it was a, it was a fair amount of people, and, and you guys ought to, you know, definitely know what was given, um, sorry.
Well, I think the consensus has been, since we've been evaluating it, that we didn't want to go to one hundred west anyway. That we want to look at other options, but, and that's why six hundred came. But then we didn't look at this lowering the, the creek. So this, I think this brings a new light that we need to look at Main Street.
So this is what, this is what the, um, the fifth, I don't know if it's exactly fifty, but I, let's, I will count it, I don't want to misrepresent it at all. This is what it says. The topic is against relocating the bridge to one hundred west to Perilone City. Keep the bridge where it's at. Do not move it to a residential street that is occupied by children. Why is this important? Moving this bridge to a residential area one hundred west will be very unsafe for the children that play, walk and ride their bikes in this area. The noise will be a nuisance due to the amount of traffic from normal cars and construct, and commercial trucks. And then there's a web. And then, and then it was signed, um, by, by the people that it was signed by. And I'll share that with you, and, um, we can make it public if the public wants to look at it as well, so.
Okay.
Thank you, Dan.
So the discussion leads us to you finding out what the cost would be to do the one location. We have that to talk about.
Yeah, I'll find out what the cost is to just, just not spend too much time other than just what it would take for them to give us good options for the Main Street bridge. I would, if we're going to apply to amend the grant, I would like to have something of substance to have behind our application to move it. In fact, if we, if we, if we spend the money on this engineering, I would like to also bring it back for a vote so that we can say, yep, these are the reasons why, and here we are voting in city council to officially request to move it. They would probably require that anyways in order to amend it, so, anyways, so. And who knows, maybe we'll look at it and we'll go, oh, maybe there's not as, options that we thought. It's just that I now have a lot of engineers that I've talked to. I don't want, I don't want to say a lot. I've talked to the former UDOT district engineer. I've talked to the, um, the engineer that runs the five-county, um, regional, um, what they call the ARTAC and ARTEC, who used to be the St. George City engineer, who actually built a lot of bridges while Saint, while he was there, the engineer, he was there for like thirty years. They did all the different bridge projects on the Virgin River, including some, some low, um, what do you call them?
Ford.
Low-
Ford.
An improved Ford, yeah. The, uh, low, oh, I can't think of it. Basically, like what we have at six hundred west. Um, and, um, and he didn't, doesn't recommend that, but, um, but that's also an option. Um, but we lose our UDOT funding if we go that route. Um, and, um, the bridge engineer, or the engineer that we've hired by UDOT for this process, and all of them has said, you need to definitely look at these other options since you have this additional information. Um, also, when we talked to Jones and DeMille and said, what about this? And I, and I quote you, he said, this is game changer information. I think you really ought to look at it. So that's four engineers that have said, that like, there are engineers that have said, you really ought to look at these options. This isn't just a, you know, wild idea from your city manager who's a bean counter.
But we would have to ask to have an amendment to move it back to Main Street.
Yeah, we'd have to amend the grant. We're going to have to amend the grant anyways because it's underfunded according to our engineer.
Okay, so there isn't anything else for item number seventeen?
All I have.
We'll move to, um, reports, updates and old business follow-up, and we'll start with Councilman Shertliff.
Uh, we had a historical preservation meeting yesterday, approved to sign for, uh, new business in the, uh, laundromat. And Dan, he's got news on the airport.
Airport runway project is back on.
Oh, man.
I, I've said way too much in public hearings that I'm going to regret, so I won't. Um, we have worked through, found an acceptable, um, solution with Fish and Wildlife and with the FAA on how to approach our prairie dog, um, issues out there. They have backed away from the brink of canceling the grant, and they have authorized us to proceed with some modifications that we can live with, that more importantly, they will fund. And, um, we had a pre-construction meeting yesterday, and we have just barely, right before I came, a notice to proceed, um, which we can now issue to the contractor. We're planning on shutting down the runway, or the airport entirely on the thirtieth, with construction starting the thirtieth and thirty- with construction starting the thirtieth and thirty first. Our drop dead date, but, issued to us by the contractor was September first because of the seasonality of doing concrete into the fall. Plus, we have to, per the prairie dog regulations, be done by November first anyways. This r- really came right down to the wire, and we're moving forward.
Good job, Dan.
Good.
Yeah, like that's, I clap for you, I'm sorry.
I've lost a lot of sleep.
That's thirtieth of this month.
Thirtieth of this month.
Okay.
And then it will be completed by November?
So, technically, it's a ni- it was originally a ninety day project, but we need to be done with all, everything that disturbs the soil by November first.
Okay.
We may do basically some applying permanent paint to the runway-
Gotcha.
After that, cause we'll put temporary paint down. We'll probably speed up the, we'll, we'll probably shorten the total construction period, cause we're gonna be under the gun, under the timeline. Um, I'm a little nervous about that, because we know what weather patterns happen to do around here. We do have a two-week buffer for weather still built into the project. If we didn't have that, our consultant would've recommended that we punt the project.
To next year.
So, we still have some wiggle room, our, our Sunrock has been awesome, and they did, have done a good job on projects like that in the past. We have a really good contractor, um, the airport will be shut down. There's a lot of work to do that. I mean, people can't just, people, I mean, pe- uh, random people use your airport, and it takes a lot of work and a lot of, like, procedure to shut down an airport, because if somebody comes and wants to land, either an emergency or just a private pilot, and they calculate their fuel and they're gonna run out, and they come, and our airport has got equipment on it and it's shut down, right? So, it's a big deal to shut down an airport, even of one like ours that isn't, doesn't have commercial flights. So, um, we're rip roaring and ready to go, and we're gonna be trained by biologists on, on how to avoid, um, um, all the prairie dog stuff.
I want you there, David.
And-
I already know how to take-
And there will be a biologist on site that has the ability to shut the project down, um, specifically in, in the north end of the project. And, um, yeah, it's been a, it's been a, it's been a journey.
All right.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you.
Oh, just wanna comment a little bit on the UAMPS, um, conference. Um, it was a very good conference this year. Um, there's a lot of stuff that we, I got out of it that, kinda, I opened on a couple. I'm just gonna hit real quickly on a few of them. Um, they did talk about the financial help, how we can help the city and stuff, get a little bit of finances for that, how to be stable. Um, the nuclear was hit, just real quickly on there, uh, just how the public perceives it. Uh, and then one thing that really kinda got my open a little bit is, uh, electric vehicles, uh, how we can prepare for electric vehicles. Um, I know one facility's kinda looking at it, putting something here in the city, um, but there's just different levels of charging stations from, you know, one, two, and three for the, for the charging stations, and how much power they're actually taking. Um, and then one really, um, opened my eyes is, uh, the semis that they've got out there now as far as electric vehicles. One of those charging station, and we, we probably will never get something here, but you never know. But, um, it was more than what the city uses on that one star, the charging station for that semi. Um, but it was just a good information on that one, and then one thing, I think is, is they said one, mm, uh, employee of Jackson Hole, that they was, they are implementing, putting the whole city, uh, cars on, um, electric vehicles up there. Um, it's, it's a big thing, people are, are doing it. Um, and then one, um, another eye opener is just, uh, solar panels. They are, cities are actually putting them in, um, and on schools, uh, for the city, you know, leasing it, and water tanks, cause they're tight on space and use them for the chargers. But also, they said the same thing is, the first generations of, uh, solar panels are starting to deteriorate. That's, they're gonna be starting to come off, and so there's companies that are coming in that actually will recycle them or take them and stuff like that. So, that's kind of a eye opener for that, so. But it was good, good information, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Downey?
I don't have anything, but I do wanna make one comment, and I know it's not gonna go over well. I've had so many people come up to me and say, "If that word T A X is on the ballot, it's going to get turned down." And I, I don't want us to co- count our chickens before they're hatched, because last week's meeting stirred the pot from the county, and it's going to-
On the jail?
Yes. And there are many people upset in town. I'm not, I'm just, I mean, I feel bad, cause it's not gonna add that much per person, but they are, they're really upset with that three-letter word.
What's, what are you, um, like, what do you mean it's not gonna add that much per person? Like, what are you, like, the rap tax?
For us, you, for us to have to pay it.
Oh.
When you-
It depends on how much you spend.
For is not gonna be-
I guess it depends on how much you spend.
Well, that's it, but I mean, it doesn't add up that much, but they are, they're tired of the word tax, they're tired of hurting, you know? But that's all.
For, for what it's worth, there was quite a discussion in that meeting about the, the value of a consumption tax was the word that they were using, which is another word for sale tax, about how the county should pursue a consumption tax. Of course, entities are limited by code what sale taxes can be charged. A rap tax is one, and we can't increase the rate, up or down. It's either all or nothing, but the, I know the county's looking into, maybe seeing if the legislature can run a bill to see if they can get, you know, a consumption tax, and anyways, but, tax is a four-letter word.
I know.
With an S at the end?
That's a five-letter word, but yeah.
And there's even some towns, um, that have turned, changed it to park, P A R C, parks, um, recreation, arts, and culture, I think.
Really?
Yeah, like, they just changed the name, so it's called park instead of rap tax.
I'm just a little worried because of-
But, I mean, it's the community's decision. If they want money for things that we're doing here in town, that's their decision. Anyway, I mean, it's their decision.
That's it.
I have nothing to report.
Oh, let's see, well, I just wanna say that the, we talked about the Meeks Pond, the water getting it down there. The engineering firms from the NRCS have turned, have said they can't work for cities, so I've been trying to solicit some individuals that can help on the engineering, trying to get that, look at that water, because I thought the NRCS could do it, and they said they could, but then they said for some reason they're restricted as far as-
They can work with counties, but not cities.
You mean municipalities, yeah. And also down there, we had some trees blow over, and then, but a private individual's going to have them removed in the stump ground, and then replant them at their own expense, so. I was made aware of that. Uh, Payton's only didn't meet, the pool, it's been closed a lot because of lightning, but it's, they're still enjoying it, and there's still a lot of work. I noticed Larry was up there, and different ones still, there's still some things to finish, and so we appreciate that, that's, uh, but I think it's, it's still been a great venue, and people are enjoying it, so. And then I just wanted to, you wanna pass those down? I just wanted to mention about a, uh, a group of us, and I've got some more of these for the rest of you if you'd like to look at them, but we, the Reeves for America came and talked to us, you know, about the, here, Mayor, do you wanna give them out to you? Anyway, uh, they came and talked, and, uh, there's a group of us got together that thought that maybe there's some other ideas that we can, can do to honor the veterans at the cemetery. So, this is one that, uh, we've got a donor that stepped up and, um, I'll just say that, that, uh, oh, Jet Smith and, and her, all activities and, uh, events, or, you know, organization is going to facilitate this. They'll, they'll put it up and take it down, but this is a, uh, an eight-foot reef, and it might be ten, that we're gonna put up at the cemetery at, uh, Christmas, and then a different one at Memorial Day. And they'll be decorated, of course, according to the, the little Christmas and Memorial Day, but this Christmas, there will be one up there. It'll be put in front of the, uh, the restrooms, and there's electricity there, so they'll be able to use it to light. This just gives you an idea, but this, this is what they're gonna do for the, the veterans, and it'll be at least an eight foot, maybe a ten foot. Then Memorial Day, they'll put another one, uh, up there for Memorial Day that will have live flowers, fresh flowers. And like I said, this will all be private donation. There's nothing that's coming from the city other than, uh, Jet Smith is, the group is going to put them up there and take them down and store them. And they've offered to do that, and the fresh flowers will be don- will be donated privately, and, uh, uh, I, well, anyway, they asked for it, so my, my, anyway, Burton Land Lifestyle's gonna donate the flowers every year and commit to that. And then we have discussed that, uh, instead of, uh, participating with the reefs across America, where they buy these fresh reefs every year, and that's a cost of, uh, it's like fifteen thousand or something, according to the number of the veterans that are up there. We decided that we try and go for artificial reefs, and we've got organizations that'll help put them up, but we're going to go for, you know, independent and, uh, donors. And we'll get about seven thousand dollars is what it's gonna take to get those, and again, Jet Smith will store them. But we're gonna kind of experiment this year. We'll put a few on some others, some that have offered to volunteer their, their loved ones' graves or whatever, and kinda see how that's gonna work, cause we know it's gonna be winter, and we know about the conditions, but in the, in the wintertime, we're not gonna have quite the canyon winds, cause if you know how the canyon winds work in the summer, your heat rises, your cool air, you know, condenses, so. Anyway, we're gonna work through that, and it's gonna be, but I just want you to think about this way. Uh, they're gonna put all, they're gonna try and mark all veterans' graves with reefs at Christmas time. And they'll be artificial, but they'll be put on there, and it won't happen this Christmas. This Christmas, there will be this large reef. And then, uh, Memorial Day, there'll be another one to replace it, put up there with fresh flowers. Those will be there. We have the donor, that's taken care of, that'll be done. Uh, the other, we're gonna start soliciting, see what we can do as far as, you know, committing some, some funds and so forth. Cause I, I feel passionately about this, and there's a group that came to me, and we just felt that this was something we could do instead of, you know, the reefs across America on, where we had to do that every year. This could be used continuously after the initial investment, and where they're stored and so forth, and so. Um, and we've got, uh, some that have already committed, you know, to donating towards this. I know my boys have committed, because I have, I have a son and a son-in-law, and, uh, that were deployed, and they're in the guard and whatnot, and so. We, we've got this started, and we'll see how it goes about getting it to, you know, you know, all the donations necessary to collect this, cause we can buy these on off-season, these reefs, and get them more reasonable, so. We just wanted you to know about that, that we haven't dropped that, that we are going to do s- this will be up there displayed this Christmas, this large reef. And the other one will be on Memorial Day, and the other, hopefully, next summer, we'll have that put together so that next Christmas, a year from this winter, this Christmas, we'll be able to put those on individual graves. So, I think that's, I just wanted to make that an FYI. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I had three items. Um, we've already talked about runway, so that one's down. Um, water infrastructure projects grant, was just gonna make everybody aware that I was, um, planning on applying for that. Obviously, we won't have to take the funds if we, unless we get them, and would add that into the budget. We already do have that project, so we would just modify the budget for that project if we were given the grant. Um, but I am extremely hopeful and pretty dang optimistic that we might be able to get some money out of that. I sure hope so. I'm sure they're gonna get absolutely inundated with grant requests. This, the state has fifty million dollars allocated. Fifty million dollars doesn't go very far when it comes to water projects. I wouldn't be surprised if they got two hundred million dollars of grant requests. But I know how grants work, and our grant will have, because we're already mostly there on our money. We, we were planning on moving forward with it anyways. Um, what we're now talking about would maybe be to add some stuff to it. So, you're not talking about asking them for eighty percent of a project. You're talking about asking them for twenty percent of a project. That's the kinda stuff that looks really good to a grant committee. So, um, anyways, I'm gonna apply for that, um, we'll see where that goes. The other thing that I have is, we've talked about it, but I, it's blown up on social media. Um, we are in the middle of our traffic master plan. Um, we had the initial meeting with, um, the engineering fir- firm that we hired to do that. As a part of that, the, the initial phase is they do, they put out traffic counters. So, we asked, um, they, we met with them, and we figured out where we had areas of concern, and where things may or not, may or may not be happening in the future that we wanted to consider. So, they put traffic counters all throughout the city, and there's rumors that we're gonna put in a traffic light.
All over town.
Lots of rumors.
This, uh, they are rumors. No, and, and if we were gonna, if we were putting in, you know, traffic counters and ready, getting ready to put in a, a thing, you'd think that those traffic counters would be by the locations you'd probably put in a light.
You would think.
But mysteriously, there's none there, because we already have the data from UDOT. The reason why there are traffic counters spread in all the other locations of town is cause this is for the master plan for the city, which will, which will develop, um, a new, a new map that shows the future planned roads and corridors and all of that. It, it, it looks at, um, a lot of things, active transportation, it looks at all kinds of stuff. This is an update to our general plan. We, the last comprehensive traffic master plan update that we had was done in two thousand two. There, it was amended in twenty fourteen, and it, and it looked at, um, exit seventy-five. We had some amendment done for exit seventy-five, but really, we haven't looked at the entire city, which from a planning perspective, when we have people coming in wanting to subdivide or do something with their property, we're dealing with a really old map, and, um, and it's, um, we need this done. So, no, it's not about traffic lights, it is about a plan. Um, so if you get a chance and you wanna squash that rumor, feel free. That's all I have.
Okay, that was one of my updates, and all of our other plans we're working on are moving. We've had meetings here and there about those, um. We do have some repairs we're gonna need to do rather quickly on our library. We can talk about those in another meeting, but that's something that's moving to a higher priority, um, right away that we need to address. Um, I didn't know if we wanted to update anything about the water board meeting. I didn't know if that was, or we weren't gonna update on this one, okay.
Mayor, can I just make a shout out to the breakwater, the cleanout up there? It looks great. You know, I think it's Rick Anderson up there doing some-
We actually have two parties and, and a third one. Um, the, this current city, um, in case there are any rumors, the current city policy about the breakwater is that if, if people want to go and get material, we do not have an active contract with anybody. We do allow contractors, individuals to go up there. They need permission from the city so that we can coordinate what they're doing. Um, we have a, a, two groups. Uh, one of them is Rick Anderson, who is, who is moving a lot of material. Basically, this spring filled up our breakwater. That breakwater gives us some protection from, from a flood event, and so a filled up breakwater is not optimal at all. Um, in fact, it's, we're kinda, it is worrisome. So, for, for, for him and this other company to get in there and move a lot of this material out, it's not all perfect. There's a lot of sand, a lot of bigger rock, but it does have more rock than normal, so it is, it is something that they want. For them to get in there and move that out, which they have moved a lot of material in a short amount of time, is a, is a win-win solution. If we put this out to bid, we're gonna ask them to do exactly what they're already doing. We're gonna give them the material, they just gotta make a big hole, and they need to coordinate it with us so that it will allow flood. They're doing that right now, um, I just- They're doing that right now. Um, I just talked to another contractor yesterday. He said, "Hey, can we get in there and get some material?" And I said, "Yep, just make sure you don't step on the toes of the two that are already there." The one, the one actually is looking for fines and sand, and the other one is looking for rocky stuff. And this guy's like, "I don't care about either of that. I want dirt." And we're like, "All right," so there's actually a pile of dirt that we need to get out of there as well, so, um, it's working well. Thanks, Dave. I was gonna update that.
Oh, it really looks good, and it's amazing how much stuff comes down that canyon and fills that thing up.
Yeah.
I mean, it is amazing. There's a lot of, and there's good material there. So, it'll be good, put good use. Those guys were really doing a good job.
Okay. Does the administrative staff have- have any updates? Okay. So, moving now into item nineteen, closed session. Um, Utah Code Section Fifty-two, four, dash, two oh five LF is a discussion regarding deployment of security personnel devices or systems. And, um, discussion, Utah Code Fifty-two, dash, four, dash, two oh five, including to discuss the purchase, exchange, lease, or sale of real property. And are there any other items on the closed session noticing? So, at this time, I would like a motion to move into closed session.
I'll make a motion to move into closed session.
I'll second it.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Isn't it roll call vote, or no? It is roll call, yeah.
Jim Sherrill, aye.
Matt Gill, aye.
Sharon Downey, aye.
Rochelle Topham, aye.
David Burton, aye.
Thank you.
How you doing?